Welcome, everyone. We will have our Milliken Senior Class President Jayla DeRusso lead us in the pledge. Jayla?
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are meeting remotely tonight and welcome all those who are participating by watching through YouTube. As a reminder, we welcome public comment and have provided a mechanism for you to make public comments by leaving voice messages to be played to the board and the public during our broadcast. If you wish to speak at a future meeting, please go to our public participation page on www.lbschools.net, which will give you more information about how to give public comments. As a reminder, in conformance with the Brown Act, when we hear testimony on an item that is not listed on the agenda, a full discussion of that topic would have to be delayed until such time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda, and in closed session today, the Board voted to approve a resignation agreement and general release with a permanent certificated teacher resolving all claims between the parties and providing for consideration. The vote was unanimous with all five members of the Board voting by roll call to approve. At this time, I'd like to mention that we have a slide presentation available on our website when we get to item number 22, the staff report regarding school reopening. So if you'd like to refer to that slide presentation and follow along during that presentation, that's available. Public hearing, we have none. Agenda items. Do we have anything to list separate or adoption of the agenda?
I move adoption of the agenda.
Discussion. All in favor by roll call vote. Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no opposition or no abstentions, that passes unanimously. Approval of minutes.
I move for the approval of minutes.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes unanimously. Introduction of our student board member, that's when I get to introduce Jelaye and she gets to tell us all about her experience and what's happening at Milliken.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. I am Jayla DeRusso, Senior Class President of Milliken High School. Thank you for giving me the time to present my school's activities to you. For the last two years of my high school career, I have been heavily involved in the many activities offered at Milliken, including BSU, which is the Black Student Union, Journalism, ASB, and Female Leadership Academy. Although we are not on campus due to safety precautions, all of these activities that I participated in are continuing and are available to students. Being that I am a part of ASB, I have the opportunity to witness firsthand the activities available for the Milliken community, and I will begin by sharing the most notable of these activities. To begin, Milliken is offering after-school tutoring starting next month. This was offered last year in our library, and we had Milliken students volunteer to tutor other students in courses that they received their least to be in, to ensure that they are knowledgeable about what they're teaching. I attended tutoring in my 11th grade year just because I felt that I needed more assistance or a different way of understanding the material presented to me. So bringing this back will be beneficial to students who have that need as well. Another thing is that each grade level has a grade-level Canvas course for information and communication. The information can be from the counselors, administration, or other staff on campus. For instance, my senior Canvas course notifies me about senior packages, yearbook picture due dates, and a lot more information on dates that are important to my graduating class. Now moving on to extracurriculars, Milliken is promoting and allowing clubs this year. All clubs are to be done over Zoom, but they still offer students the ability to interact with one another as they would be in person. To promote these clubs, Milliken drafted a list with club names, descriptions, meeting dates, and times, and sent them to students and created notifications on Canvas to ensure that we all had the opportunity to participate. These clubs are a primary way in which Milliken is encouraging students to interact with our school community and try to make unusual circumstances as normal as possible. For instance, our Black Student Union is especially interactive during this month as it is Black History Month. This club has been posting on their Instagram different activities students can do to support African-Americans. For instance, this week is Crazy Inventions Week, and students were instructed to walk around their house and find things created by an African-American person, research it, and share what they learned about it on social media. So that's just one of the ways clubs are finding opportunities to allow students to be interactive at home. Another extracurricular in which I currently participate in is Milliken Corridon, which is the Milliken's newspaper. I was formerly a web editor, and now I'm one of the co-hosts of the podcast, Two P's in the Podcast, and we try to incorporate a lot of interactive things in the podcast. We focus on allowing students to navigate our conversations. We invite students to share their opinions on topics. We also have them come and talk about issues such as lack of motivation, difficulty paying attention in class, and many other topics. Furthermore, we like to recognize the achievements of our students. For Black History Month, we recognize students that committed to or got accepted into historically black colleges and universities, just to show them that they are not going unrecognized and that we applaud them for thriving during this difficult time. It is evident that for some students, such as myself, we are experiencing difficulty choosing whether or not to attend these colleges, and for this reason, we contacted students who go to these colleges to share their experience and give us real insight that we could potentially use to make our decision. Now going into what ASB is doing, our ASB director has organized us into groups and has assigned these groups a week where we choose a theme and activities we want the Milliken community to participate in. So for instance, my group was assigned the week of March 17th, so we kept the St. Patrick's Day theme, but we are focusing on teachers rather than students for the week. We recognize that teachers too are struggling with online learning as much as students are, so we are planning a week full of activities to show our appreciation. One of our days will be to surprise teachers on Zoom with notes that contain compliments or our reasons for being thankful. Another theme that ASB does is Zoom bombs. So during Spirit Week or Spirit Days, where we have holidays such as Christmas, ASB members will decide what should be done these days. And going along with the theme of Christmas, we usually tell students to wear ugly sweaters. So on that day, students who want to participate by wearing an ugly sweater are instructed to keep their camera on for about 20 minutes, not knowing that Millie or Robbie Ram, which is our school mascots, will come into the class, take down names of the students who are completing the task, and then later on, they'll get a prize into their house, which could be a shirt, a Milliken mask, a bottle, or anything else in our inventory. The last thing I will mention is that Milliken ASB encourages students to participate in national days through social media. For instance, February 4th was National Counseling Week, and we were instructed to email our counselors and show appreciation. In the past, we had days such as Pred appreciation Day or National Taco Day, where you share an image of you doing what the day calls for with Ram High ASB, which is our ASB Instagram, and we reshare it to encourage other students to participate as well. Those are some of the activities available to the students, staff, and administration at Milliken High School. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my report.
And thank you, Jayla. Yes. So you're the senior class president?
Yes.
Okay, so you've been making some plans. Do you have things narrowed down as far as schools are concerned?
So as of right now, I'm torn between Howard and Spelman University.
Okay, well, you know what? We wish you luck, and we know you're going to be successful, whichever school is lucky enough to have you, and thank you for joining us. And we know that you're probably busy with homework or reports or something, and we don't expect you to stay with us. You're welcome to stay, but know that if you need to go, that's all right also.
Thank you, guys.
But thank you, Jayla. Okay, next, we have communications, child development centers, staff appreciation with Cindy Young. So welcome, Cindy.
Hi, thank you. It's an honor to be joining you this evening. Good evening, President Craighead, members of the Board, Superintendent Baker, and executive staff. My name is Cindy Young, and I am the Director of the Child Development Centers and Kids Club. Tonight, I wanted to take this opportunity to formally recognize and share the dedication, commitment, and hard work of the CDC and Kids Club staffs. I would also like to recognize my Head Start partners. These individuals have been providing in-person services to our youngest children, as well as essential wraparound services to our school-age students and their families since July. I am incredibly proud to be their colleague. Together, they have created warm, caring, safe, inviting classroom environments that have supported students' social, emotional, and academic growth through one of the most challenging times our community has ever faced. Our success is attributed to every single CDC staff member, Head Start staff member, and Kids Club staff member, focusing their combined efforts to ensure the health and safety is a number-one priority. I wanted to publicly recognize these incredible professionals. This year, in lieu of celebrating teacher appreciation and classified appreciation as separate events, we will be honoring them as a group because ultimately, we are better together. Recently, I was having a conversation with a fifth-grade student about his goals, and he said, "I have two goals. The first is to be more responsible, and the second is to do something so great that he would earn a standing ovation." He said, "Everyone should have at least one standing ovation in his or her lifetime." Before we share a brief video capturing the incredible work of these dedicated professionals, please join me in recognizing CDC, Kids Club, and Head Start for their commitment to excellence with a standing ovation. I invite you now to enjoy this brief video highlighting the CDC staff and students.
Thank you.
And thank you. That's really incredible to see how little kids can stay socially distanced, how they're wearing their masks. That's, I think, maybe surprising to some people how our youngest kids can be so responsible. So thank you for that. And thank you to all of our Head Start and CDC teachers who have been on the job with the kids since the summer. So thank you. Next, we have National Board Teacher Recognition with Kristy Cale, Dr. Cale.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board and executive staff. National Board Certification is one of the most respected professional certificates available in education, and it provides numerous benefits to teachers, students, and schools. The National Board Certification process is designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers in schools nationwide. And in Long Beach, we're lucky to have 175 nationally board-certified teachers. We also have a program that's led by Leonardo Ramos, who's with us today. Leo, can you wave so they can see you? All right. And Leo helps support teachers who are going through the certification process, as well as those who've already achieved their National Board Certification. He has prepared a video for you for tonight's communication, and in this video, you will hear a brief overview of a program and have an opportunity to celebrate teachers that recently achieved their National Board Certification and those who renewed their certificates this year. So this is a major accomplishment in any year, but especially so this year. And I'm just going to hold this up so you can see. If the teachers were here tonight, we would be providing them with these certificates. Unfortunately, we can't do this in person, but we promise we're going to get those certificates out. So without further ado, I'm going to ask us to roll the video.
National Board Certification is a process designed for teachers to demonstrate through standards-based evidence the positive impact they have on student learning. It is grounded in their five core propositions that describe what teachers should know and be able to do. Teachers have a commitment to student learning. They know the subjects they teach and how to teach those subjects to students. They're responsible for managing and monitoring student learning. They think systematically about their practice and learn from experience. And teachers are members of learning communities. The certification process is designed to collect standards-based evidence of accomplished practice, and it is divided into four components: content knowledge, differentiation and instruction, teaching practice and learning environment, and being an effective and reflective practitioner. In Long Beach Unified, we offer support to teachers at the different stages of the program. We currently have 41 teachers who are in the pre-candidate program, 33 teachers who are in the candidate program, and 175 who have received their National Board Certification. To be a part of our pre-candidate program, teachers need at least three years of classroom teaching experience. They apply to the program, and if accepted by the Oversight Committee, they participate in professional development sessions led by LBUSD National Board Support Providers. Once pre-candidates successfully complete the program, they have the option to apply to our candidate program. If accepted, LBUSD sponsors their registration and National Board Assessment fees. Candidates can also attend support meetings provided by LBUSD National Board Teachers to get additional guidance on the four components. They will work at their own pace to complete the certification process in one to three years. Candidates that complete the process and are able to successfully receive the certification receive an additional annual compensation at a rate of 5% of the base salary. The district also provides support meetings for those that need to renew the certification. National Board Teachers also have the option to become master teachers and provide 60 hours of service outside of their regularly scheduled workday. Those that choose that option receive an additional compensation at a rate of 5% of the base salary. National Board Master Teachers are responsible for providing numerous hours outside of their duty day to benefit the teachers and students of Long Beach Unified. Using their proposed hours log and estimating their current hours, we can begin to see some of the impact they have in our district by providing over 775 hours of assistance to National Board, pre-candidates, and candidates, more than 1,100 hours assisting new and experienced teachers, over 1,200 hours assisting student teachers, close to 700 hours offering professional development activities, over 1,300 hours of curriculum development, and over 4,200 hours of student support aimed at closing the achievement gap. Besides giving a brief overview of the program, we would also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge our brand-new National Board Teachers. Achieving a National Board Certification is an amazing feat and demonstrates their hard work and commitment to continue their growth as educators. Let's also take a moment to acknowledge the National Board Teachers that renewed their certifications this year.
Well, thank you for that presentation. A lot of time and effort goes into that program. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Measure E and Measure K Bond Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report. Yumi?
Yes, I'll kick it off. Our Citizens Oversight Committee really plays a very vital role for our Measure E and Measure K Bond programs. This independent committee meets many times during the course of the year to review our progress, as well as to ensure that our bond funds are being spent in alignment with the intent of the voters in the measures, and so we're very appreciative of their service. And so I'd like, I'd very much like to welcome Walter Larkins, who's a chairperson of the committee, to provide our annual report.
Thanks, Yumi. Appreciate that, and nice thing, everyone. I haven't seen you all in quite a while, so it's been an exciting and eventful and transformative year, I think, for everyone, dealing with COVID-19 and managing ourselves through that process. And so I have a prepared statement, as you can probably imagine, so there's a lot of good news that we can, we're going to discuss with that, but it's relatively short. So of course, thank you, President Craighead, Board members, Superintendent Jill Baker, and staff. My name is Walter Larkins. I happen to be the chairperson of Measure E and K Citizens Oversight Committee, and I'm here really to, on behalf of the Citizens Oversight Committee, to present our 12th annual report to the community, which details another year of bond program accomplishments for the city, for the Long Beach Unified School District. So there are several highlights that I'm going to bring up, one of which is we've completed progress totaling over $180 million during the period of 2019 and '20. Projects included classroom support facilities, heating, air conditioning, and athletic field improvements. And some of you have seen those improvements in your facility, or maybe you haven't, since COVID has isolated some of you from those events, but there's a silver lining to what's going on. We've been able to really accelerate some of the programs because obviously, the schools aren't occupied in a way they would normally be in a "normal" academic year. So we're proud to report that although schools were closed for in-person instruction in spring, renovation and construction continued without interruption. In many cases, the team was able to accelerate construction, prepare classrooms, for return of students and staff. The committee held four regular meetings and one special meeting with tours of a few campuses and modernization projects underway. During each meeting, the committee reviewed project statuses, and we had financial reports for the programs that are pretty detailed and actually on a website that you can all see. This past December, the district's independent audit firm presented the completed annual performance and financial audit of Measure E and K Bond Program, which found no findings for the eight straight years, and the committee remains very impressed with the district's meticulous record-keeping and financial stewardship of public funds. And that's quite an accomplishment in that as far as school districts across the country, that's one of the highest ratings that you can get. To the best of our knowledge, the district is in compliance with Article 13A, Section 1B3 of the California Constitution regards to the appropriate use and spending of bond proceeds. On behalf of Citizens Oversight Committee, I want to acknowledge the Board, Superintendent Jill Baker, the district staff and families, and the community for their steadfast partnership and demonstrated flexibility and commitment, adaptability to navigating these sort of uncharted waters, which is really an understatement. We shall be proud that our bond projects are leaving a great legacy for generations of students to come. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate your continued support of what the committee is doing.
And thank you, Mr. -- yes, and thank you for your service and to all of those volunteers, volunteers that serve on that committee. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's see, next, we have our --
Ms. Craighead, I just had a quick question. The report that Mr. Larkins gave and the work that they put into that report is
Uh, the report that Mr. Larkins gave and the work that they put into that report, is that available for people to view somewhere?
Yes, it is on the website, and, um, I'll make sure that you all get that location.
Thank you.
Yeah, everything's on there, believe me.
I, I, I've seen it. It's a great website, and I'm grateful for the service, uh, of you and your fellow committee members. And I know our public, uh, is grateful for the oversight work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that question. Um, Dr. Baker.
Thank you. So I have the pleasure of introducing our last communications item tonight, which is a continuation of the board's request to feature students, staff, and school celebrations in each of our board meetings. And so tonight, we'll have the pleasure of just a short clip of, um, an interview that I conducted with Linda McClure, who was the Long Beach Unified Teacher of the Year from Bancroft Middle School this year. Um, she's a veteran teacher who is computer science and engineering. Um, she has a master's degree in technology, what, which has been put to incredible use this year. Um, but what you'll hear is a reflection on her work as a teacher in Long Beach Unified School District. She also, I think, um, you should know that the process for becoming a Teacher of the Year oftentimes starts with a nomination, but it is a rigor, rigorous process, much like National Board. A teacher has to reflect. They have to submit answers to questions and the way that they teach and share about, about what their classroom is like. And all teachers report growing from the process. So today you'll hear a little bit of the reflection that Linda McClure from Bancroft Middle School does to close our communication section and to celebrate a member of our Long Beach Unified Staff today.
What are some of the biggest lessons learned that you might encourage a newer teacher to just know, to be patient with, and to know this is coming, or this is going to get easier, or just kind of your lessons over time?
Study restorative justice. I have been studying that now for the last couple of years with a cohort at my school and, um, it didn't ta, it was, it's taken a while to get, to get it, but I feel that understanding some of those methods of, um, listening beyond discipline and punishment. I would say a really big aha moment, and I don't remember when it happened, probably more recently than it should have been, is really recognizing that when kids are not doing well, when they don't, um, they, they're not turning in work, not doing well, they're not doing that on purpose.
What changed in your classroom? Can you give a few specific examples of what changed in your classroom? And I'm really interested because, um, our work as a district in excellence and equity and putting those two things together, the high expectations for students and quality teaching, and knowing that we have to do something different for some students who need supports, need a different approach, need a different kind of acceptance to get them to excellence. That's how those two things go together for me. And in your teaching way, you described that. But you also described, um, a different kind of awareness on, in, inside yourself that then allowed, allows you to interact with your students differently. So talk about some of, maybe their techniques, maybe their, maybe it's self-talk, things that you learn to say to yourself, um, to, to transform the way that you think about discipline or classroom management.
Mm-hmm. Well, um, oh, I have, I have a memory of a student that, um, had an anger, um, reaction to failure of any sort. Um, and rather than, some, some kids get real quiet and shut down and kind of just goof around, and, and that's a little bit more, you know, uh, of the regular thing I see at the age that I teach. The student was a little more explosive and, uh, which is more disruptive. So it's, it's definitely something you notice right away. And it's really easy to have a knee-jerk reaction to that, uh, you know, you know, you need, you need to leave, or this is, you know, you can't do that in my classroom. What, um, we did is we, um, you know, we talked about what he could do instead. Um, he just needed permission to not do that software program. If he was feeling frustrated, he wanted permission to stop. And it's, it's so easy to say, well, but you can't stop. Other kids have to do it. Why shouldn't you do it? Why couldn't I just say, sure, you have permission to stop? If you're feeling frustrated, stop doing that activity. And why don't you just, you know, why don't you go to another personal activity for five minutes or ten minutes, however long you need? And now you're not frustrated anymore, and you feel better, and I feel better. And at some point, you're going to be able to get back to your work.
Thank you, Linda, for the work that you do each and every day.
Thank you, Jill. It's been, it's been a pleasure. I'm, I feel really lucky that I, I work in Long Beach. I think that, I think we have a, a good thing here.
Well, thank you, Dr. Baker, for sharing that with us. Um, it's always wonderful to see, you know, just, you know, what, what some teachers are up to, what students are up to, and in the midst of all of this. Um, but at this time, I'd like to congratulate our National Board Certified Teachers, those that recertified, and, um, congratulate again our Teacher of the Year of Linda McClure from Bancroft. Um, and just let our guest know that I thank you for being with us, but don't feel obligated to stay for the remainder of the meeting. We're glad to have you. But if you need to go, we understand that also. Okay, and next on the agenda, we have public testimony, um, on items listed on the agenda. So we will go to those, and thank you for being with us, to our guest. So I imagine we have, um, public testimony items, and that would be our, our, uh, phone messages since we're, uh, meeting remotely. Do we have those phone messages queued up?
My name is Jerry Connor. I am speaking in reference to Agenda Item twenty-two that addresses school reopening updates on the February seventeen, twenty-twenty-one Agenda. I am the parent of a second grader at Cleveland Elementary. I have a concern regarding the requirement for nasal swab testing. Dr. Baker stated it would be an anterior nasal swab, but I believe that this is still unnecessarily invasive to our youngest students. My son is on the autism spectrum. He is unable to tolerate tags in his clothing, and I expect a nasal swab will not be tolerable either. I would like to ask if it is possible to have a saliva test as an alternative for our students who are unable to tolerate a nasal swab. Initially, in reaction to the testing news, we changed our son from in-person to online instruction. However, we had to revert back to the in-person option as the principal informed me that changing his placement would necessitate a change in teachers due to the classes being constructed based on original intention. To change his teacher this far into the school year would be disruptive to my son's education and pose an undue burden. I respectfully request that an alternative mode of testing be established concurrently with anterior nasal swab testing to accommodate our students with special needs. I appreciate your time and consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Laura Adams, Agenda Item twenty-two. L.A. County has hit the metric to immediately open elementary schools, and they should do so immediately. The science shows that we can safely open now. The CDC does not say vaccines are a requirement to safely reopen. To reassure our teachers to feel safe going back to work, we should be discussing treatments that are now available to treat COVID nineteen, regardless of our media and unions neglect to educate our community. Lastly, families should be reminded that we have a beautiful option of choice, the choice for teachers to go back to work or not. A fam, our families who now have a cho, choice to go back to school or not. That's the beauty of this country, and we should uphold these liberties. There might be hurdles, but no more excuses. Our children have endured enough. Every day is a loss for vulnerable children, and their mental health should be, not be overlooked. Thank you very much.
My name is Bill Weeks. I teach at Jackie Robinson Academy. In September, Governor Newsom said there would be little chance of going back, uh, before June of twenty-twenty-one. He was right. No one should go back before the end of this academic year. When the CDC says we don't need all teachers vaccinated before going back, that is a politically motivated decision influenced by big business that cares more about profits than human lives. It's unbelievable that educators are not looking at the science. The latest science tells us that the most common way the virus has been spread is by persons who are asymptomatic. All the taking of temperatures every morning will not detect those most common asymptomatic carriers. And even if every teacher was immunized, that wouldn't stop them from transmitting the disease back to their loved ones nor children from transmitting the disease back to their families. Whatever happened to the wisdom of an ounce of caution is worth a pound of cure? The decision to bring the youngest children back first was made without consulting teachers or their union despite what the school board has tried to tell the public. No one who works with young children daily thinks their masks will stay on, nor the social distancing will be maintained. If a teacher takes even eighteen students to the restroom, it'll be impossible to do so without some people passing within six feet of one another, especially in a line that's over a hundred feet in line, length. It would take half an hour for two boys and two girls to use the restroom. And every time a toilet seat was used, it would be compromised. Who would clean them? Our students have not practiced a fire drill in over a year. When we did before, my class would come out and walk side by side with students from other classes. If they wait, this fire drill would take ten times longer than it would normally take. Is that safe practices? If desks are six feet apart, who can walk between them if the kids need to go to the bathroom? And if a student can't walk around and look at the work and can't pass out papers, what is the point of coming in, in the first place? They can do less work than they can now at home. My students at home now take a five-minute break and go use the restroom and come right back. Going to school would take half an hour for them to use the restroom. The CDC has also said that teachers who are in high-risk categories should be given a choice virtually, but this is never mentioned. I'm in a high-risk category, and no one has pro, approached me about my choice to, to teach virtually. My kids have been doing very well virtually. The test scores have been high or even higher.
My name is Jamie Torres, and I'm calling regarding the reopening of schools. As a parent and a credentialed teacher in the state of California, I think our district should move to follow the science, follow the recommendations of the CDCs, and reopen the schools as is recommended. Many of our students in low-income communities, people without access to technology, or parents who are unable to keep up with online school due to work schedules and other obligations, are falling far behind their peers. Um, and while some students are, are doing well on Zoom, others are not, and we need to make sure that our achievement gap decreases or at the very least doesn't get any larger than it currently is. And the best way to do that is to give students a safe space to come and attend class under direct teacher supervision.
My name is Carla Castro. This is for the February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one session, Agenda Item number twenty-two, Reopening of Schools. Dear Long Beach Board of Education, Upon hearing of the executive staff pushing forward with reopening our schools in early March, I was in disbelief that our board would move in such an aggressive and unprecedented manner. It saddens me that the Board of Education and executive staff, who often boast of having all stakeholders in mind when making decisions, have truly and purposely left out teacher input. We are in unknown waters, and proceeding in such haste and disregard will ultimately cause serious health and possible death among teachers and support staff. If or when I get COVID nineteen, which one of you will look my son in the eyes and explain why his mother had to die needlessly? Why did she have to make a choice between her job and her life? Why are you in such a hurry to put so many in harm's way? Which of you is willing to work in a classroom for six hours knowing it is increasing your risk of contracting COVID? Which of you will put your health in jeopardy the same way you are asking of your teachers? If you're not willing to risk your health, then why are you asking teachers and support staff to do the same? I only ask that you delay opening until April twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, so most of us can get vaccinated. I am currently waiting on five lists. Two are county, two are through pharmacies, and one is through Kaiser. And I'm hoping to be called soon, but I do not know when that will happen. I'm just asking for more time so that me and my colleagues can be vaccinated and return to school safely. I thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. Remember, if you're not willing to risk your health and life, why are you asking us to do so? Thank you.
Hello, I am a special education service provider in Long Beach Unified. I wish to remain anonymous. Per our return instructions, I do not consent to the weekly testing of asymptomatic staff and students. I believe we have the right to return to in-person learning without being coerced into unwanted weekly medical procedures. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jerry Morrison. I, I'd like to address an item on the agenda concerning school reopening. And this is a comment for the public session. I'm a teacher at McBride High School, and like all teachers I know, I'm looking forward to the day when I can teach my students in my classroom. When I became a teacher, it wasn't to sit in front of a computer monitor all day. This last year has been a challenge to us all. We all want it to be over. But I would hate to think that we would throw all the hard work away when the end is in sight. As much as we all want to be back in class, the safety of our students, the staff, and our families has to be in the forefront of our minds as we reopen schools. Right now, there is confusion about what exactly opening the schools will entail. Teachers, parents, and students are being told different things. Sometimes we're told one thing by a district official one day and something completely different the next. In order to do this properly, we all need to be on the same page. The transition to remote learning last summer was far from perfect. The district seems to be more concerned about fidelity to a pre-pandemic bell schedule than to figuring out what was best for our students. When surrounding districts altered their schedules to help adapt to teaching on Zoom, our district insisted that we all sit in front of our computers for the whole day. And when other districts shortened classes to allow time to work with students and families who need extra help, our district insisted that the classes remain the same length. This resulted in making remote learning an unnecessarily stressful situation for our students, parents, and teachers. We need to make sure that we get this transition back to face-to-face learning right. Otherwise, the consequences this time could be a lot worse. We all have a role to play in getting this right, but ultimately, it's the school board where the responsibility lies. I urge the school board to take control of this process, scrutinize the plans for reopening, question the data behind the pronouncements, provide the equipment that we need in the schools, and adopt a reopening plan that we can all stand behind. The health and safety of our students, teachers, staff, and their families is at stake here. Thank you.
Hello, I am requesting that this comment be placed under Item twenty-two for the agenda, or if that is already filled up, please place it under Items Not Listed on the Agenda. Long Beach Board of Education members and Long Beach Unified Executive Staff. Hello, my name is Irma, and I come from a long line of Long Beach Unified employees and alumni dating back to the nineteen thirties. Many of my family members have worked for and are currently working for Long Beach Unified, and we are proud and honored to belong to the Long Beach Unified School District family. Counselors are an essential piece of student support services at Long Beach Unified. They are dedicated to preparing students for success and are often the unsung heroes at our schools. Even though the students are not physically at their school sites yet, counselors have not skipped a beat at converting their support services over. Counselors are actively meeting with their students, staff, and families through Zoom and continue to connect with their students daily through class and presentations, phone calls, Zoom meetings, emails, and social media messaging. There are not enough counselors or hours There are not enough counselors or hours in the day to properly address all the needs of the staff and students during these unprecedented times. Counselors are overwhelmed with the amount of time and the attention that needs to be poured into their student populations. It is a shame that counselors have been willing to put in many hours beyond their workday without pay for almost an entire year, but the district will not grant them the ability to work from home. Instead, counselors have been told that they must report to their school site, even though their work duties do not require them to be there. Long Beach Unified should extend a hand and demonstrate how thankful they are that their counselors are willing to go over and beyond, even without pay and sometimes without sleep, just to do what is best for their students. A concrete way to show this thankfulness that costs no extra money would be to actually stand behind their counselors and give them the respect and trust to work from home. This act will help keep your fellow Long Beach Unified School District family members safe. The district loses nothing by doing it, yet they gain everything from it. Let's celebrate National Counselors Appreciation Week the right way by allowing them to work from home until the students return to campus. Hopeful for change, thank you and good night.
Hi, my name is Kelly Dust Silva and I am both an LBUSD parent and elementary teacher. This is in regards to Item Number Twenty-two on the agenda, the reopening of schools. I think it is premature for the district to reopen schools without allowing staff members to be vaccinated before being required to return. Some staff members have been vaccinated, but many TK through fifth-grade staff members have not due to the shortage of vaccines. Some of us have medical conditions which put us in a higher-risk category. Some of us are caregivers for people who are in a higher-risk category. Please delay opening our schools until the staff who wish to have vaccines have had both their shots and the vaccination has had time to take full effect. By delaying the reopening of schools by a matter of weeks, you could save lives. I also implore you to make the available vaccination appointments prioritized to staff who currently work with students or are TK through fifth-grade school staff. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laurel. I'm calling for Item Number Twenty-two. Okay, LBUSD Board, you really shouldn't open schools. I'm a fifth grader and I'm worried about my beloved teachers getting sick. The mayor claims that most of the teachers have been vaccinated, but that's not true. If we went back in person, I would put the teachers, it would put the teachers, the kids, and their families all at risk of getting COVID-19. I also feel a lot of stress about this because it's my last year of elementary school and I might not see a lot of my classmates ever again because of going to different middle schools. And it would be really tough not seeing them or interacting with them if we went back in person. I wouldn't see half of them ever, including some of my best friends. At least online school allows us to interact as a whole class. Also, my sister in first grade is really worried because she'll have to have a completely different teacher because we chose to stay online. But she loves the teacher she already has. Why are you creating so much new stress for every, for so many young children? We've already gone through so much sadness and stress this year and last year. Before you do this, think about what you're putting everyone through. Please be patient and wait until our teachers and community get the vaccine. It's not worth losing any more lives in this com- Oh my God, your phone just never- in our community.
Hello, I'm a current school employee. This message is addressing the COVID reopening plan at the board meeting dated February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. This message is to share concern about the potential for mandatory asymptomatic testing for students and staff as a condition to return to in-person learning. I would encourage everyone to review the COVID-19 and reopening in-person instruction framework guidance from the California Department of Public Health, which was dated January twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, because nowhere in these guidelines does it state that weekly testing is a condition to reopen for in-person learning. Furthermore, FDA guidance states that the PCR test must only be used in the presence of symptoms, should never be used on healthy people, and should only be used in a typical setting combined with an exam by licensed testing for school states. Quote, "If a school is implementing a testing strategy, testing should be offered on a voluntary basis," end quote. A test that has not been approved by the FDA cannot be mandated. Simply put, you can't test someone who does not want to be tested and use it as grounds to prevent them from conducting their job in their typical setting. We must also face the reality that weekly testing will subject children to more psychological and emotional stress. And as our district has placed such an emphasis on the social and emotional health of our students, this weekly procedure would be contradictory to that philosophy. So please reconsider your stance on weekly asymptomatic testing on students and staff. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm a current school employee with LBUSD and this message is addressing the COVID reopening plan at the board meeting dated February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. I am very concerned about the possibility of mandatory asymptomatic testing for students and staff as a condition to return to in-person learning. All schools that are currently open are subject to the minimum testing requirement standards by Cal OSHA, and this includes response testing to exposed cases and outbreak testing. Weekly testing is not a condition to reopen for in-person learning. Mandating a test to asymptomatic staff and students as a condition to return to in-person learning is unethical. What is most concerning is the undue burden the district is willing to place on staff and our LBUSD families, subjecting our children, children's even more psychological and emotional stress and possibly excluding students who would have otherwise chosen to return to campus if testing was not mandated. In addition, routine testing only shows a snapshot of potential viral, potential viral presence in that moment and does not take into account the myriad of compounding factors. A positive PCR test does not conclude that a person has COVID, especially in the absence of symptoms. The inevitability of such high false positives coupled with other concerns regarding the legitimacy of the test will cause unnecessary exclusion of otherwise healthy individuals in addition to unnecessary school closures. There are many aspects that need to be considered when attempting to mandate a medical procedure on our students who at present have suffered a multitude of psychological and emotional stress there's never before seen in history. Time has shown that schools are not vectors of transmission in the community and that our children have a greater than ninety-nine point nine-nine percent chance of survival from COVID. Evidence has shown, has also shown that children are not super-spreaders and that schools are probably the safest place for our students to be at this time. Asymptomatic transmission still remains unfounded. Dr. Anthony Fauci has also stated that the main driver of a pandemic is not from asymptomatic carriers, but from symptomatic spread. Students and staff need to be provided with full informed consent, which includes being advised of their right to decline, to take the test, and of their right for asymptomatic students and teachers to be in the classroom. During such unprecedented times, our priority should be getting our students back to safe and welcoming environment free of undue stress and burden. There are other known evidence-based protocols, including frequent handwashing, temperature-taking, staying home when sick, proper disinfecting, and proper ventilation that can allow students and staff to return safely. Students should not be forced to undergo any medical procedure, no matter how superficial or anterior the procedure may be, in order for them to return to the environment that they once, that was once their safe haven. Please reconsider your stance on weekly asymptomatic testing on students and staff. Thank you.
My name is Amy Allen and this comment is for Agenda Item Number Twenty-two. Good evening, Board members, Dr. Baker and executive staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight regarding the reopening of our schools. I am a teacher at Naples Elementary. I was at the September board meeting with my husband, Scott Allen, and we both spoke to you about the importance of bringing kids back to school. I'm so excited to see that this is finally a possibility for our students in Long Beach. My seventh grader and twelfth grader have been attending in-person schools since the end of September and their public school district has not looked back or second-guessed the decision. I am forever grateful for their courage to show up and get kids on their campus. Tonight, I want to encourage all of you to show up. I want to see you show up to the board building, show up in person to a school for a visit, and show us that the fear of COVID is not going to define us or detain us. Our community desperately needs each other. Our country needs each other. I believe that we are in fact created to be in relationship with others. A Zoom meeting or Zoom class should not replace our need for in-person relationships or in-person learning. Dr. Brené Brown wrote, "What we are ethically called to do is create a safe space in our schools and classrooms where all students can walk in and for that day or hour, take off the crushing weight of the armor, hang it on a rack, and open their heart to truly be seen." I encourage you to let us create those spaces on our campuses so that our students who want to be there can be seen and be safe again. I end with this. Courage starts with showing up and letting ourselves be seen. Please let the students show up. With appreciation, Amy Allen, teacher at Naples Elementary.
Yes, my name is Noah Thomas. I'm an LBUSD parent. I'm addressing Item Number Twenty-two to the board. Dear School Board and the Superintendent, Please reconsider reopening for in-person learning at this time. The plan to reopen will be more disruptive to children's learning than staying online. What are we trying to achieve by going back to in-person? Students would only have two and a half hours of instruction under current stress, under constant stress, to stay distanced and to wear masks. They wouldn't be allowed to be able to really interact with their peers or their teachers under these conditions. And there, there's the worry that the protocol won't be adequately enforced. There are still so many unknown factors surrounding COVID and the transmission rate is still really high. My kids worry about transmitting COVID to their teachers and family members. They worry about their friends' families as one of their classmates' father died of COVID. Going back in person won't alleviate the stress working families face having kids at home because of the only half-day schedule. What working families can take additional time to drop off and pick up so close together. This only helps stay-at-home parents and those with extremely flexible schedules. Students have finally adjusted to the online learning environment. My first grader has come out of her shell and started participating more in her online class than at the start. She has a close group of friends and loves her teacher. With our families opting to stay home, she will be switched to a new teacher who has agreed to continue online. This is completely inequitable. She will be starting from square one in terms of her feeling comfortable in her class setting. The current instruction method is working well. We all wish COVID were over and we could go back to normal, but that's not reality. The infection rate is still high. Our teachers are only starting to be vaccinated. There is a more virulent UK strain of the virus surging. This is not the time to increase the risk to our community by going back to in-person education. Thank you very much, Noah Thomas.
Hi, my name is Raymond Smith. I'm addressing Item Number Twenty-two and I'm speaking in opposition to opening schools at this point. I'm a father of first and fifth graders at, in Long Beach schools. I'm also an academic administrator at a small college and so I'm well aware of the issues, the challenges faced returning or not returning to class. I just want to quickly address a couple of issues. One of them is simply the health concerns. I, teachers have been vaccinated. It's not clear that all of them have been or will be anytime soon, given the issues in getting the vaccine out. And the same concern about staff members. So I'm really, really concerned both that some member of the staff might, or a teacher might bring the virus to the school, spreading it to many different places, including the students and then perhaps home to their families. Or even though the students are not as much of a carrier, an issue for as carriers, they still can be so. And given the rapid rise of the more dangerous variants, I think it's going to be really dangerous. As Dr. Fauci said, it's another fourteen or so weeks. He's predicting that things will be really, these will be really, really tough. So for health reasons, to protect the health of your community, I really encourage you not to open the schools at this point. My other concern is about just the disruption to student schedules. Our granddaughters have talked a lot about how they've really adjusted very well to the online environment and having to go to a situation, I think they may be online anyway, but having, being split up from their friends, maybe not seeing them for the rest of the year. All those sorts of activities are really important to their development. And the kinds of restrictions that you're going to have to have on the campus to make things safe, make it really, really hard. I just, I have a lot of trouble seeing how a class full of first graders can manage to sit for however long they have to sit, a couple of hours, without removing their mask. This is going to be really tough for them. And I wonder how much good the teachers can really do if they, as they're staying in their separate space in the classroom, they're not able to see the kind of work the kids are doing. It seems to me that just this disruption will be a really significant issue for the children. And I don't know that it's worth it, especially if the virus roars back again. Let's hope that it doesn't, but if the virus roars back again and you have to close schools, there's another disruption for a lot of the kids. So I think just in so many different ways, this is just not the time to make the change. You need to wait until the end of the summer and see how things are going then and let's hope we all-
Hello, my name is Leslie Bullum. I am a teacher and parent of a student in the district. I am commenting on Agenda Item Twenty-two, school reopening. I am hoping the district and the board will reconsider rushing to reopen March first. Regardless of what new criteria the state decides, COVID numbers remain extremely high and could climb within days as we feel the effects of the past two weekends and of the new variants, which now number seven. The state has shifted guidelines due to political pressure, but just because we now can do something doesn't mean we should. We are not prepared to reopen March first. There are many unanswered questions and many questions this board should be asking before in-person instruction resumes. Starting with, why are we even discussing reopening when we do not have a full plan in place? As of the last board meeting, there was no plan for COVID testing for students or staff. Ms. Kerr asked about this. The district's reply was, yes, that happens. Specific plans were not prioritized for- Seven hundred, and board as well. Most importantly, if we don't have a plan for this year, what about next year? Might not all of the time and money being used to rush us back this year be better spent planning for next year? How is going back for two-point-five hours a day in spring going to solve problems concerning learning loss, getting parents back to work, or addressing social, emotional needs? Why are we pushing so hard to get students off Chromebooks at their house only to sit them in front of a Chromebook in a classroom? Students didn't receive the education they deserve this year. No one is at fault for this. But rushing back before it's truly safe to do so, before there are solid plans for the safety of students and teachers and for meaningful instruction, isn't going to change that. There's a saying I hear often around the district. We are flying the plane as we build it. This isn't possible. This is a euphemism, for I don't know what I'm doing, so I'm going to make it up as I go. Teachers, students, and families deserve more. We can't possibly be building safe and meaningful in-person learning at all, let alone during a pandemic, without having a clear plan of action. Please do not allow any school to reopen until a comprehensive plan is created and agreed upon by both the district and-
Hello, my name is Amanda Meeham and this is in regards to Agenda Item Twenty-two, the school reopening. I am-
Hi, that, that, we are at the thirty-minute mark, President Craighead?
Okay, I imagine we have callers for testimony on items not listed on the agenda as well?
Yes, we do.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll go right to those. Oh, we, Mr. Otto, you're muted? But I see that you have a question?
It, it, it's just that I think we should let people know that the entire rest of the comments on this agenda item are available to board members and they can, and Can Can and I- and I expect, and I know that I will listen, listen to the rest of them. I don't know how many more there are, but I'll make that a practice. And I think we can move on to the next agenda item with comments on non-agenda items, which may have some overlap here.
President Craighead.
I appreciate that. Yes, Dr. Benita.
Is it possible, just to get a sense from the TCA, how many more comments we had? Public comments?
We had a total of 64 comments on agenda items, and we have four. Yeah, so there's still quite a bit left.
We've done 17 so far.
Correct.
Yeah, so we'd have about three hours of comments.
Correct.
You know. So I think we should go on with the, I, public testimony not listed on the agenda, with the knowledge that those other comments that were sent in will be not only given to us as the board, but also be made a matter of public record. So. Um, yes, Ms. Kerr.
Thank you. I, I agree with. I agree with that, that suggestion. And I know we're also, the transcripts are made available to the board members as well. So as we comb through those questions, this is going to be an ongoing discussion. A lot of it is on an item that's upcoming where actual information is going to be provided, and some of the questions that are being brought up will be answered clearly. But this is by no means a one-night conversation, so we can go through those comments and make sure that as we continue to have the conversation, that, that we make sure we're addressing any questions that weren't answered in, in future updates. My two cents.
And a question for our attorney, President Craighead. Mr. North, is it, you know, can we, can we also find a way to publicly acknowledge the folks that did submit? Public comment, like is, can we post a list of the names of the people that did submit just so that folks know that we received their, their, their public comment, whether that's in transcript form or that we're going to listen to it? I think it's also important to acknowledge the folks that, for whatever reason, didn't get their voicemail heard today, that at least acknowledge them by name?
And the answer is yes, you, you can do that. We haven't notified people that we would do that, but we always warn them that this is going to be a matter of public comment. I think I heard at least one, maybe two people tonight, who said, I wish to remain anonymous. To my knowledge, I don't think that we have their names, so I don't think that we would, we even have the power to say what this person's name was. So if the board decided to do that, or the administration decided to do that, we'd simply list them as anonymous commenters.
Yeah.
Fine.
I, I'd like, I'd like to request for that to happen, President Craighead, for those that we do know the names of.
Okay. Would we do that as a matter of including that in our minutes for the meeting, or how would we do that? As far as having the names of the people who submitted comments? I guess that's something we could figure out later?
I think having, for me, having it as part of the official minutes that can be acknowledged, and then as those transcripts and/or video calls, if that's available. Obviously, if the transcripts are there, we'll see it. Perhaps we can compile a list and have that made available before the publication of the minutes, if, as just as a good faith to communicate that we receive them.
And, and we may also want to make a distinction between those people who ask to be anonymous and those people that didn't give their names, but told us something about them. Just, I mean, we, we don't have to summarize each of the testimonies, but, but it's, it's a principal distinction, I think.
Agreed.
Okay, these are all, yeah, these are all really great points, and I think the, I think the bottom line here is that we value the public comments. We read them, and it does inform the decisions we make, the, you know, it informs the, the work that, that's taking place. So I appreciate this conversation. And now we're going to go to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda.
I want to speak on the board's response to public comment on non-agenda items at the last meeting, and I want to speak on the issue of the board's role in the decision-making process. First, at the last meeting, many diverse community members earnestly requested that board members develop a consistent form of constituent communication. They used the example of the board member from Area 3's monthly community meetings. The community speakers were sharing that great idea in hopes that other board members may consider something similar. During public comment, did someone accuse Mr. Benita of pitting one board member against another? Or was Mr. Benita saying the community was pitting one board member against another? Either way, the comments made by Dr. Benita resulted in many of the speakers feeling as if they had done something wrong. If one of your colleagues or someone secures to think this is what was happening, then he or she is mistaken. So please, board members, do not assign motive to any community member who has taken the time away for their family to offer up suggestions for better communications with their district representative. My second issue is the issue of transparency and the roles and responsibilities of the board. As opening of the schools is a big issue right now, I will use that as an example of the need for clarification on the board's responsibility. On Friday, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention released a detailed strategy to help school districts decide under what conditions they could reopen. The article stated that the new CDC guidance leaves decisions around vaccinations and testing up to local control. In this district, does that mean that local control is the administration or the democratically-elected school board members who represent us? On March 14th, on March 14th, 2020, a resolution was passed, giving the superintendent the sole power to decide when to reopen schools, and I quote, "when the superintendent deems inappropriate and safe to do so," unquote. This and 15 other areas are the purview of superintendents under emergency action. These powers, and I quote, "remain in effect until repealed by formal board action." The superintendent has the power to make decisions on behalf of the board for anything and everything related to the school district according to this resolution. So what decisions do school board members make? Should the public comment be directed to staff or maybe teachers? But they report to the superintendent, yet the superintendent reports to the board, who need not make any decisions at all? Who is the board responsible to? Teachers who fund their campaign? Administrative staff? The community who voted for them? And who has the real power? And finally, how and where in this conundrum is the community? And is public comment even considered? Just wondering. Maybe those regular community meetings the public was asking for are not necessary after all.
Hi, my name is Michelle Liu. I'm a parent of a freshman and a senior at McBride High School. High school students are being kept from adequately learning subject matter, required to meet the A through G requirements required to graduate and to be accepted into college. Students have been refused the ability to have labs for biology, chemistry, physics, machine shop certification sessions, and project lead-the-way courses for pathways such as engineering, health and medical, and CGI, such as forensics. Those classes require labs and hands-on learning with specific equipment to be able to fully understand the course material and meet the A through G requirements. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nubia Flores Sardano, and I'm the parent organizer at Long Beach Forward, and I wish to speak on a non-agenda item. I'd like to ask board members and LBUSD staff with children to think about all the questions you might have as a parent if you were sending your child back to the school in the midst of a pandemic. What does the classroom setup look like? Will I be allowed to walk my child to class? What will the school day look like? Was my child's teacher vaccinated? How are you cleaning the classroom? If someone is sick, how will you notify me? Who is testing my child? You all work in the space of education. One would imagine that you would all be very engaged parents. Now I'd like for you to imagine what it might be like to have all these questions and not speak English, to have all these questions being answered via public forums in meetings you have been invited to attend as a parent with no access to that information in your own language, presentations in English, even in spaces meant for monolingual Spanish speakers, IEP meetings, or a simple email to the teacher. This time of COVID and our schools being shut down has shown a great barrier that confronts monolingual Spanish-speaking parents. The information changes almost hourly. Parents survey school opening dates, choosing schools. Parents cannot fully engage with their child's teacher, participate in district parent meetings without adequate interpretation. An example, tonight's board meeting, if a monolingual Spanish-speaking parent wanted to read up on what you're discussing, they would be unable to because not even your board agenda is available in Spanish. This is a public meeting where people are invited to engage, and the agenda is not in Spanish or Kumai, two of Long Beach's largest populations. How can, how can parents feel like they're making the right informed choices if they cannot communicate with their schools or LBUSD leadership? Thank you for making these board meetings available in English, Spanish, and Kumai. However, when a parent goes through the effort to register for a parent meeting in order to not only attend but also participate and interpretation is not provided, it is not okay to continue to send them to a YouTube channel. That comes out to the equivalent of sending a parent out of the room. How is sending a parent out of a community space meant to engage them an equitable answer? I ask you that you please make sure that all materials are translated in multiple languages, that you train teachers how to communicate with monolingual speaking parents, and provide adequate unbiased interpreters in district parent spaces and IEPs. Thank you.
My name is Jermaine Tatum, Long Beach Unified Parent, zip code 90810, non-agendized item. According to the California School Boards Association, the role and responsibilities of a board member. Citizen oversight of local government is the cornerstone of democracy in the United States. School board members are locally elected public officials entrusted with governing a community's public schools. The role of the school board is to ensure that school districts are responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of their communities. Boards fulfill this role by performing five major responsibilities. Setting direction, establishing an effective and efficient structure, providing support, ensuring accountability, providing community leadership as advocates for children, the school district, and public schools. These five responsibilities represent core functions that are so fundamental to the school system's accountability to public, they can only be performed by an elected governing body. Authority is granted to the board as a whole, not each member individually. Therefore, board members fulfill these responsibilities by working together as a governance team with the superintendent to make decisions that will best serve the students and the community, according to website csba.org. I share this information as a reminder to those who are there to serve us. At last board meeting, community members came forward to share their thoughts regarding activities that were taking place in the community that were of benefit to the community. Instead, the community was gaslighted for their information. This doesn't speak, that type of behavior doesn't speak to the responsiveness of the values, beliefs, and priorities of the community. So my request is that board members, please remember why you are there to serve the community. Also, last March 2020, the board yielded its role, its responsibilities to staff. Staff has been doing an amazing job the last year, but when will the board take back its responsibility to make decisions on behalf of its constituency? Again, the board is there as, to work together as a governing team. Unfortunately, they have yielded their responsibility to the superintendent, and when will they take it back? Thank you.
Hello again, my name is Maria La Salgado, and I'd like to speak on a non-agenda item. In March of 2020, this school board gave a directive and delegated authority to the superintendent to take necessary action to protect. I'm sorry, to make necessary action to protect, to.
What are the veggies?
That is the end of non-agenda public comment.
Thank you. Um, it's time for a break, so I'm going to suggest that we have a break until 6:40, unless I see any objections. I'm going to scan the little squares here. I'm not seeing objections, so we're going to break until 6:40. Thank you, everyone. Okay, welcome back, everybody. I would just like to clarify something for the record. We did institute an emergency resolution last March, giving the superintendent the ability to make decisions, that kind of thing, because of the pandemic, because of the fluid situation. And that ability for the superintendent to make decisions was utilized on a couple of occasions back in March of 2020. And since then, the board has been making decisions, and, and you hear all of our conversations because we conduct our business during these meetings. So I just thought I would clarify that. Now we go to item number 22, our staff report on the school reopening update.
Thank you, Mrs. Craighead. I will wait for Mr. Itzen to pull up the slides as I will be kicking off tonight's school reopening update. Thank you. So along with the team, we will be sharing a very important school reopening update tonight, and I'd like to start with a bit of context, and then we will get into some of the specific details. So as I have said on, for other reasons, we are in the best place at one of the hardest and most complex times in, in recent history. Many of the decisions that we're having to make, the issues that we're addressing, the plans that we're trying to create have never been made before. And so this is a first time through for everybody, and I think the complexity has been revealed in what you have heard this evening. And so here we are tonight. We are here at a moment even sooner than we expected. For the first time since March 13th of 2020, the adjusted COVID case rates permit us to plan for the phasing in of students for in-person instruction. And as I say that, I know that that issue, as we have heard tonight, is incredibly complex. Families have made a selection, which you'll hear a little bit more about, whether they want to remain in online learning for their students, or if they want their students to return to in-person instruction. And those numbers across the district are hovering around 50% in each category. So tonight, you are going to hear about our phasing in plans that begin with TK through five students having the option to return to in-person learning on March 29th. And you'll hear the details of what leads up to March 29th for us to prepare further for students. The March 29th date takes many things into consideration. It's not a balance, as you might think of things in balance, but it takes many things into consideration. It allows for every single TK through five staff member, both certificated teachers as well as classified staff members, to receive two doses, not just one, but two doses of the COVID vaccine prior to students returning. And you've heard the, the appeal by many of our speakers tonight for that to take place. And I'll talk about the vaccination program in a moment, but you can know that this plan is based on TK through five staff, certificated and classified, receiving, having the option to receive two doses of the COVID vaccine prior to students returning. It also allows for an additional safety measure, and that is for the asymptomatic screening of staff and students prior to return. It allows for teachers to have time in their classroom, and you'll hear from Mr. Moskowitz on the elementary timeline, teachers to have time in their classroom, because we know that actually teachers need time to adjust and acclimate to a new environment. So many of our staff have worked from their classrooms during the pandemic, pandemic, but others haven't. And so this time, the week before students return, for teachers to return, will allow staff to re-acclimate themselves with their campus, to go through all of the health and safety protocols that have been developed and updated, and updated, and practiced, and updated again. And we want our staff to feel comfortable with those health and safety protocols. It'll, it will also allow for families to begin to reconnect with staff at schools and to see their school as the. and to see their school as the place of community that it has once been. And lastly, the plan to return students, TK through fifth grade students on March 29th, allows for us to think about that week like we think about the first week of school in September. It's a four-day week. It's a time when we would expect that teachers would feel comfortable thinking about their own well-being with students and students' well-being, that they would feel empowered to spend time checking in with students and to think about social emotional well-being, not just academic well-being. And so in tonight's update, we plan to address three key questions. What progress has been made to provide vaccinations to LBUSD-certificated and classified employees? You'll hear Dr. Brown talk about what are the current plans for asymptomatic screening for students and employees? And then lastly, how the district plans to phase students into school for in-person instruction at the elementary level, at the middle school level, and at the high school level. I'll be joined by several colleagues for the presentation. I'd like to share a little bit about our partnership with the city and do some acknowledging of the vaccination program that has taken place in the city of Long Beach. So we have Mayor Garcia, the Health Department Director Kelly Holopy, Dr. Anissa Davis, the Medical Director, to thank for the opportunity for 3,600 of our employees already to receive the vaccination. This week, we're in pro, in the progress of 1,600 of our employees having the option to be vaccinated. That is not happening across this country. And so we are in a rare moment where you can see a city that comes together around education, a city that values students and teachers and has taken that value into its, its plans. Many other cities have abandoned the, the opportunity to vaccinate educators as part of their frontline workers. But here we are in Long Beach where our city has prioritized educator vaccinations, even when there was pressure to not do so, even when they could have placed the vaccines elsewhere for others who want the COVID vaccine. I'd also just like to acknowledge, as our employees were getting vaccinated, their reports were that every clinic was well-run, it was efficient, it paired Long Beach Unified nursing staff and school safety staff with city employees in a way that appeared seamless. And lastly, the city team has been incredibly responsive to our employees. We've had employees that got a vaccination email that went to their junk mail. It was resent to them or they were coached about how to find that email. We've had employees that had lots of questions about completing the forms necessary for vaccination, and the city staff has been responsive. And they've been responsive to employees and they've also been responsive to us. In this really hard time, there's, there are a lot of opinions about vaccination and vaccination programs. But what I can say is our city has come alongside us to ensure that our educators have the opportunity to be vaccinated before they are with students in, in, in our phasing in plan. And one point of clarification I'd like to make before turning it over to Dr. Brown is that being vaccinated is not a requirement. And so there were some questions raised in the public comment about all teachers being vaccinated. And I will carefully use the term, the opportunity to be vaccinated because it is not a requirement that staff, either classified or certificated, are vaccinated. It is an opportunity. And with that, we'll head to the second question of tonight, which has to do with asymptomatic screening and a health and safety update from Dr. Brown.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity. And as I lead into talking about asymptomatic screening, just for clarity's sake, the guidance that we're working from comes from the California Department of Public Health. And in our last meeting, we reviewed the criteria developed January 14th that requires an adjusted case rate of 25 for five consecutive days for schools to be eligible to reopen. And as Dr. Baker has referenced, we reached that point yesterday, February 16th, where our adjusted case rate in LA County is at 20. And so with that, I'd like to talk about asymptomatic testing as one component of the safety, health preventative, um, and prevention planning that Long Beach Unified is engaging in. One of the public comments referenced that testing is not required, and that's in fact true. It's been the subject, like other things, of a lot of conversation and even some healthy debate on the part of our state, county, and local health department. But is, it is in fact true that asymptomatic screening is not a requirement. However, it continues to be a recommendation by the California Department of Public Health for counties that remain in the purple tier. And it's something that in Long Beach Unified, we are engaging in as one more layer of prevention and health and safety preparedness for our community and for our staff members. I want to highlight that as we move as a county from the purple to the red tier, we will consider our practices going forward. And at that time, we will likely follow the testing cadence that's laid out by the California Department of Public Health, which, which transitions from weekly asymptomatic screening to bi-weekly and then ultimately transitions away from screening. So I want to highlight that the idea of screening is not a forever process. It's not something that our employees or our students would engage in over an extended period of time, but it's something that as we remain in the purple tier, we feel committed to doing before people arrive on our campuses for the first time, both employees and students. And then that we will do on a weekly basis while we remain in the purple tier on a bi-weekly basis as we move into the red tier. And then we will plan beyond that point as we move forward. I want to highlight that the type of testing that we are engaging in will be an anterior nasal swab. It will not be a deep nasal swab. It is not a extremely invasive procedure. In fact, it's a procedure that adults and children will do on their own as they are able. And some of you at home may be listening and saying children testing themselves. But I, I want to share with you that information that we have received and we will be communicating via school sites shortly is that students are able to self-administer. The, the anterior nasal swab is really, uh, an insertion in the front of the nostril with the insertion being about a half inch and a 15-second swab. And students can be taught to do it. They will also be supported by staff as needed. And the possibility of a parent supporting their child in doing this screening upon drop-off is also something that we will be engaging with. So our intention here is not to cause harm. It's to bring a sense of safety and caution to those that are coming onto our campus. It's to have a monitoring system in place. And it's also to allow for children specifically to engage in the testing in the way that is the most comfortable for them, recognizing that children can be taught to do many, many things. So with that, there are a lot of specific questions about how the testing will play out. And what I want to convey tonight is that we have already begun operationally working with our schools and our schools are prepared for the return of students. As a part of that next layer of preparedness, we will be working with schools on the operations and practices that they will need from district guidance related to the testing protocol, but also considering the subtleties of each school, which extend to the number of students that will be coming onto campus. And you'll be hearing as the presentation continues that we have schools where 76% of students will be returning in person. And we have schools where 26% of students will be returning in person. And that's a wide range in terms of the number of people that will be on campus. And so we will be working with schools with specific guidance around testing protocols, but with flexibility about the way that the testing protocols will play out at each campus because of the number of students that may be there. So we will be sharing more in the days and certainly weeks to follow on the testing practices. But tonight I wanted to highlight, uh, the distinction around anterior, anterior nasal swabbing. Um, and then recognize that we will be answering questions going forward. The last point that I'd like to make this evening is related to the COVID safety plan that needs to be submitted and posted. And I wanted to highlight that there are two components to this plan. One is the COVID-19 Prevention Program. And that is something that is on our website posted already. And it can be found in our COVID resources on our district website. The document that you see on the slide is something that we've been updating as we've moved forward from August to this point. We've revised this school opening and safety plan recently to highlight the most current information. And when I say the most current information, I mean reflective of all the changing guidance that has changed from December 30th to January 14th to February 8th. And, um, I say that because the, the goalpost has continued to move and our practices around that moving goalpost are reflected in this document. The other thing that we will be submitting to our local health department next week for approval is the COVID guidance checklist. And right now, the items and, that are required in this checklist are structurally complete. But we will be submitting this document next week to our health department, who we engage in regular conversation with. And then once that plan is approved, it will be posted to our website a, as well in the area where we have all of our COVID resources. So with that, I want to move towards conversation about the phasing in of elementary students for in-person instruction, with the highlight being that we have reached the required 25 cases for five, I'm sorry, 20, adjusted case rate of 25 for five consecutive days. At LA County, our current adjusted case rate is 20. And so we have reached that threshold. And so with that, I'm going to pass over to Brian Moskovitz, the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools, who's going to highlight the dates that we will be using in moving forward with phasing in elementary school students to our campus.
Dr. Brown, if you can move to the next slide, please. Um, so for those of you who may be listening at home, for this slide, I want to point out that when we talk about the phasing in of elementary students and we talk about elementary teachers and staff, we're also including the elementary age students and the TK V teachers at our K8 schools. You'll hear from Dr. Lund here in a few moments, specific to middle schools. But he and I have been collaborating, working closely with all of our elementary and K8 principals. And so for this portion around TK V returning, we are also including the TK V students and teachers at our K8 schools. Um, we are also including our teachers and students at our Buffon TLC school. So I think it's important to just remind everybody that when we talk about health and safety protocols, we have actually been planning for the return of students since last spring. And last spring and summer, we convened a group, uh, an advisory committee that had teachers, it had parents, it had district staff, it had representation from our, um, associations, our bargaining union members. And we really wanted to come up with a plan that would allow us to return students in a safe and effective manner that would also allow for the best educational experience. As you heard, uh, Dr. Baker say, up until this point, we have not been allowed by, um, the county to reopen schools. So even though we've had these plans in place and, and available since last spring and summer, this is the first time we've been able to actually put them into effect. I think it's also important to, to know that while individual teachers may not know the whole plan, our principals at our elementary and K8 schools have been working on a very, um, detailed reopening schools checklist since late 2020. They have been going through everything from ensuring they have the right amount of PPE on campus, ensuring that they have identified the entry and exit points for students to come and, and leave school in a safe manner. Uh, they have been considering the staffing needs that will be required to properly supervise students and, and many more items. So just, those are just a bit of a highlight. What we recognized was that in order for our principals to be able to make that next most critical decision and move into communication of all of these details, what we really needed was next to find out exactly which students would be returning to our school. You can imagine if a school had 600 students returning to in-person or 200 students returning to in-person, that, that variation in the number of students is going to have an impact on some of these final plans. And that's why from January 25th to February 12th, we resurveyed our student, or I'm sorry, our parents to determine which option, in-person, hybrid, or online, they wanted for their children. Now, another, I think, reminder that's important was that we did this back in the summer and many of you took that survey in the summer. Our plan at the time was to hopefully bring students back early in the school year based on those survey results. And we built our classes based on those survey results in the summer. Of course, now, you know, months have gone by where, where we are now. And so what we've done is we've looked at the survey results that closed just this last Friday. And this morning even, um, we were meeting with all of our principals to look at their individual school results. And to be able to move forward now with a clear understanding of the, the date of a return of students, the number of students that will be returning, and what they will be doing over the coming weeks is providing very clear, um, very clear communication, both from, um, receiving input from teachers and staff and from parents, and providing communication to teachers and staff, parents, and students around these. We know that there are critical items that need to be, um, communicated and shared. Our principals will be prepared to do so, especially now that we have more clarity around the number of students returning and the, um, the return date. So our plan, um, here moving forward is that on March 22nd, all of our TK V teachers, including those teachers at Buffon TLC, will return to their classrooms. They will continue to teach that week in the distance learning model. Um, they will also have time that we will communicate with them, um, in each of those days to work in their classrooms and prepare their classrooms for whatever may be needed when students return. Then students will return on March 29th. And again, that includes our TK V students at our elementary and K8 schools. And that also includes, uh, our Buffon students at TLC. And that's only for those parents who have indicated they want their children to return on the hybrid schedule. So I will be available, uh, to the board if you would like to ask questions moving forward. I will hand it off back to Dr. Brown to move into a conversation about the middle schools. And then, uh, again, we can open up to a larger conversation, question and answer after that.
Thank you, Brian. So while the, um, information that we're sharing this evening is very specific to the soon open reopening of elementary schools for in-person instruction, we want to also share information about our plans for middle and for high school students. And so in terms of revisiting the case requirements for secondary, the requirement is different. And we showed this at the last meeting, but just to make sure that everybody's working from the same information. The COVID case rate requirement for phasing in in LA County for middle and for high schools is that we need to be in the red tier for five days, which means that our adjusted case rate would be below seven for five consecutive days. So currently, as referenced before, our adjusted case rate in Los Angeles County is at 20. And to move into the red tier and be able to reopen middle and high schools, we would need to be at an adjusted case rate of seven for five consecutive days. Our great hope is that we continue that we, on the path that we have been on, and we continue to see the decline that we have seen. And we move towards this target at an early point so that we're able to move forward. But I'm going to pass to Dr. Christopher Lund, the Assistant Superintendent of Middle and K8 Schools, who will talk about our planned phasing in for middle school students for in-person instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. If we could go to the next slide, please. So similar to what we've learned with our elementary return, our middle school return is predicated upon resur surveying parents. I will say that our counselors and administrative teams did an amazing job this year preparing for our reopening. So our classes at the middle school level have been formed based on the original preference that parents cited in their summer survey of whether they preferred an in-person, all-virtual, or an independent study program. So building on that will be, uh, resur surveying parents to verify their, you know, current preference for return. And then obviously working with those schedules to see what modifications, um, can be made to accommodate any parents that have, uh, have a new preference in terms of their, um, in-school or virtual setting. We are looking at the month of March as an opportunity to resurvey our parents. So parents at the middle school level can anticipate some outreach during the month of March. So parents at the middle school level can anticipate some outreach during the month of March to confirm their preference for a potential return. We are looking at the week after spring break as an opportunity for teachers to return to classrooms. And then, the following week as an opportunity for students to return. You might note that April twentieth is not a Monday, it's actually a Tuesday. Our middle school schedule is actually predicated upon an all-virtual Monday as part of our hybrid model. So the actual return to in-person schooling would start on the Tuesday of April twentieth with the hybrid A B schedule, where students would attend school in on either the A schedule, Tuesdays and Thursdays, or the B schedule on Wednesdays and Fridays. So once again, this is highly dependent upon, obviously, that red tier designation that Dr. Brown referenced, a resur surveying of our parents to make sure that the classrooms can accommodate the number of students interested in returning, which obviously varies site by site, classroom to classroom, which is something that we're noticing at the elementary level as well. So depending on the number of students that can safely occupy that space with six-foot distancing, working with our schedules to, you know, manage what classrooms teachers use for those spaces and how many students can actually be in those spaces. And like I said, what what modifications, if any, are necessary based on the the new survey results. So the spring break would be obviously a transition time with the following week being a return for teachers and then the following week as a return for students. So that's our current plan in place. And those same precautions or measures that the elementary team is taking into consideration, our middle school principals are also taking into consideration in terms of the checklist required for safely reopening. With this date, obviously, a sense of urgency and preparedness is necessary. Working through that checklist, making sure our classrooms are fully prepared for the return of in-person learning. So let me turn it back over to Dr. Brown, we can discuss high school.
So at at the risk of being redundant, I just want to say that the requirement to reopen for in-person instruction in our high schools is the same as middle schools. So we need to be in the red tier, and we need to be in the red tier for five days to be able to reopen. So with that as the platform, let me ask Dr. Jay Camarino, the Assistant Superintendent of High Schools, to go over the dates that we are working forward from related to high school students and staff.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. What I want to remind our community is that remembering back in March, March, March thirteenth, twenty twenty, our counselors, head counselors and administrators, as they were working out the master schedule for the school year of twenty twenty-one, which is this current school year now, we purposely knew and strategically planned for our students to only have six classes. For the most part, students only have six classes this year, and some of our seniors have five classes this year. So knowing that none of our students have a full slate of classes as our middle school counterparts do, we really have, again, an opportunity to really look at the hybrid schedule for high school. And we planned that our students not only would have six classes or less, we would also have students divided into A B hybrid schedules in this planning. So to 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 really reiterate everything that we have all shared, a lot of planning has happened since March thirteenth. That is a culmination and building up to where we're at today. So again, same as Dr. Lund has mentioned already, in about in a week and a half, we will also deploy our parent survey to determine the number of students that will want to return for in-person instruction. And then, by April second through the eleventh, which is spring break for all of our high schools except for Camden Sato. Camden Sato's spring break is the week prior. We will have teachers return on April twelfth to prepare classrooms. A lot of our high school teachers have been on campus, so they will just prepare classrooms for distance learn and to continue distance learning from that the week. Or we are anticipating as having our seniors, who really are going to, again, really have a a respect for the fact that this is their last year in high school and have missed out almost in a quarter and a and of last year and this year also is to have the seniors come back on the week of April nineteenth and returning on a hybrid schedule. And then, on April twenty-sixth, the following week, having the rest of our class, ninth freshmen through juniors, return on a hybrid schedule the week of the twenty-sixth of April. And I believe the next slide is questions.
Okay, so I will be checking to see if we have board members with questions or comments. Would anybody like to start us out? Well, you know what, I'll I'll go ahead and start us out. And I would just like to clarify that the information has been changing. That is one constant thing that we have dealt with in this pandemic is that the information has been changing. So if everybody could keep that in mind as we report out, that we do have staff that have been on top of this, and we do have a plan that's been in place. And as you've heard, the plan has been revised over time because things are changing, the numbers are changing. So I just would like everybody to keep that in mind, you know, just to clarify that part of it. And then, I guess my question would be to our staff, are there going to be opportunities for our parents to ask questions? And is there going to be an opportunity for a two-way discussion? I know that parents will have a lot of questions. We have more meetings before we actually are planning to bring back our students. But I know that parents have so many questions. So if somebody could address that for us?
I'd be happy to start, and then anyone else obviously can jump in. You know, we've had the luxury of been able to hear from principals from schools around the state, frankly, through opportunities that Laker has put on, outreach that we've done. And so we've learned a lot from these schools and districts that have already reopened. And what we know is that that important, that communication, the two-way communication is critical. So in the coming weeks, every principal, I'm sorry, every parent should expect to be able to hear from their school principal to be potentially asking questions. So if there's opportunities for input from parents, but definitely to be right, providing very clear information, they can expect things like written communication. They could expect videos potentially being showing where on campus students may go. And so our principals are already planning for and are ready to implement their communication plans in the coming weeks so that parents, students, teachers and staff, all stakeholders have opportunities both to give input and to hear clear communication plans.
Let me just add, thank you, Brian. I I wanted to add that something that's important is that the guidance that schools are working with will be led from the district and from the health and safety protocols that we are working from. Schools are not making up ideas on their own that they're acting with. But to Mr. Moskowitz's point, we recognize that the subtleties of every school, which could be the number of students who are physically coming onto campus, it could be the way you enter and exit the campus, it could be multiple entrance and exit points, et cetera. The the differences and unique components of every school really need to be best explained by the principal of each site.
If I may also, that our elementary and K eight schools have been doing pretty extensive outreach to families over the past several weeks in conjunction with their survey. So based on the survey results, based on the parents that had not completed the survey, our secretaries, IOAs, counselors and principals have been reaching out to families to answer any questions that they may have and assist them in completing those surveys.
Thank you. I I would also like to note that during this pandemic, it seems like a lot of information was coming, you know, from the district, kind of, in some cases, directly to the parents. And and that's because the, you know, the kids are at home, they're not physically in the classroom. And this this information coming out tonight feels like we are pivoting and we are moving more to a more usual way of conducting business, where if I'm a, you know, if I'm a parent and I have my kids at school A, I get my information from school A. But during this pandemic, I've been getting my information kind of from the district. And so this is a shift in that. And I appreciate you making the distinct, the distinction between the information coming from the district but being handled by the schools according to their individual circumstances and their own communities. So to me, tonight feels very pivotal. And I I just want to, you know, thank all of the, you know, the team for for all their hard work in keeping up with all with all the information coming forward. I know that it it hasn't been easy, and I want to, you know, commend you for meeting with people in other districts to find out what's worked for them, what hasn't worked for them. So we can kind of learn, you know, through their best practices or mistakes, either way. But I know other board members have questions, so I'm going to go to Mr. Miller. I see your hand up, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. So actually, this question is potentially for Brian. But before I get there, I just wanted to emphasize, like I have spoken to more than once in regards to getting back to the brick and mortar components of the school district. As we know, that that has been the most conducive environment for success, stronger than this digital platform that we're using now. Obviously, this is the motivation on why we want to get back to reopening our campuses. All things considered, I know that there are many parents like myself who have their concerns about some of the safety protocols when it comes to the entry and exiting of the campuses. What do the classrooms look like, all of those things? And I know that these details are continuously being worked out. One of my first questions and one of my initials questions are, can we or do we have the details regarding the entry and departure of our K three schools?
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Miller, it's a great question. So we absolutely have protocols in place for how schools will screen students when they come in. We're working through the the variation is going to be among sites is if you have, again, maybe three hundred students that are coming for in-person instruction, you may need three or four entry points, whereas a school that has fewer students coming in person may have fewer. So the the broad concept of screenings on a daily basis of ingress and egress of supervision that will be required for that, all of those details have been worked out and are currently being finalized at the site level based on the the most accurate results that we have from the survey that closed this last Friday. So the the nuances of it are going to be a little bit site-specific, but the the broad details have been worked out through our health and safety committees and have been communicated and are being communicated to our principals.
Understood. And so when you're saying the nuances will be worked out from a site level, I understand. So I'm, for example, I'm going to look at Lafayette. And I used to live darn near across the street from the school, and it would take cars twenty to thirty minutes to get to the campus before the pandemic. And so when I think about potentially being tested before you go into the campuses, I'm just curious if you have any information on what some of those nuances will look like to potentially expedite entry things of that nature.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, I can give you eight, one concrete example of what it might look like differently from site to site. So you can imagine a school that would have three or four entry points so that students would spread out. And likely, what you would see is maybe an alpha station, so A through J through this gate, L through P at this gate. And so families can come together through those gates, but it's spreading the the whole school community across multiple entry points. So that's going to stagger people so you don't have everybody congregating in one place. You could also imagine at a school that has a a direct access to a kindergarten yard, that parents might bring their TK or kindergarten students directly to the kindergarten yard. And the the gate from the street into the yard, that's where the screenings will take place for that age level. So the variation is the number of gates you have is going to vary based on the number of kids. Some of our school plants are very different. You can think of an Oropesa that is bordered by some very busy streets. It's a little bit harder to get multiple access points versus maybe another school and more of a suburb that has more open streets, more access points. So there's going to be variation in that way. But I think that as a concrete example, alpha stations, where kids are coming in and families but staggered around the school campus. We've heard of other places where kids enter potentially with like a a name tag, if you will, so that when they come on campus, staff can help them get to the right classroom. So there's a variety of strategies that we're putting into place to ensure that students are able to arrive safely, be screened safely, get on campus safely. And that, but the variation is really going to be dependent on the the physical plant and the number of students returning to any one school.
I might also add to, Mr. Miller, to your question, that schools right now, for the adults that are coming onto campus right now, whether it's a staff member or someone coming to the office, they currently go through a screening process that includes taking their temperature and answering a series of questions that they have to, that they have to answer before coming into contact with the staff at the school.
Okay, um, Mr. Otto, did you have a question? But you're muted. Mr. Otto, you're muted, did you have a question? Mr. Otto, you're muted.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, yes.
So it's my understanding that this COVID case rate is based on county numbers, which is what the what's been used, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Do it, do we know what the Long Beach COVID rate is in in the Long Beach area itself? I know we have our own health department, and and I just wondered if we knew what that was. I I have it in my mind that it was, at least several weeks ago, was substantially higher than the than the county number, but I don't know what's happened in the last couple of weeks.
It's been, the Long Beach rate has been trending with LA County with slight variation as the rate in LA County has declined, the rate in Long Beach has declined. But our reference to the county number is because one of the requirements from the blueprint for a safer economy, which the California Department of Public Health put out, is that even a city with its own local health department would not deviate from the rate within the county.
Right.
So that's why our references are to the LA County rate.
But but do we, do we know what the rate is in Long Beach? Just or do we just don't follow that because of the way it it's what we're supposed to do it?
I don't know it off the top of my head, does anybody?
Current rate is thirty-two point five.
We're currently thirty-two point five? Okay. Now, and we did these parent surveys to determine the percentage of students returning to school for in-person instruction. Did did we talk about in the survey the types of instruction, meaning I know it's hybrid? But I don't, is it, is, when they come back, what do they expect? Is it, is it hybrid, five days a week, six hours a day, or what what is it? I know we've got answers to that.
Yeah, so when when we first sent out our communication to parents around the reopening of schools, the survey that we were asking of them, we did send out a video that had some description. So our our hybrid model at the elementary level is it, when students come in person, it is two and a half hours a day of direct instruction by the classroom teacher. And then, after that, the students will go home and work on some additional asynchronous learning opportunities. That would be if a student were to choose to remain online, they would still receive the two and a half hours of direct instruction from their teacher via online instruction. And they would also have additional asynchronous learning opportunities outside of that time.
Is that district-wide or is it implemented differentially in different parts of town based on other information?
So in Long Beach Unified, that will be for all of our elementary students, TK to five students in our elementary schools and our K eight schools.
Okay. Okay, the the reason I ask is because I suspect that there are some areas of town where it would be harder for students to come and then leave and go home because they have working parents or they just don't have the additional resources to do that. Is there a way to take that into consideration, or doesn't it really make much difference?
I mean, I obviously, it's going to be more challenging for some parents than others to bring their students to school. I mean, I, I, obviously, it's gonna be cha- more challenging, uh, for some parents than others to bring their students to school for two and a half hours. I think that's why it's important that we are giving parents the option. Um, we, we know that that, that two and a half hours of in-person instruction is not gonna work for everybody. Um, so, so they still have the online option that they've been experiencing, um, since the beginning of the school year, that they'll be able to continue through the end of the school year, if they choose.
Gotcha, and, and, and but, but given that what we believe and I believe is that. What we want is to get kids back into school because that's the place where they can learn the most. Um, is there any accommodation that we've considered? That could assist students in places where they had trouble trans- being transported back and forth. Um, uh, and, and, and that their only option wasn't just to be online all day because tha- that was an issue of it. Have we thought that through?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Otto, that's a good follow-up question, I appreciate you asking. So, we actually have several programs, including our CDC. Our, um, CDC has a school age program, as well as our kids club programs. We're also in conversations with some various other agencies to see what kind of after-school care might be available. Um, that, that kinda varies with, as we get closer to the date, we'll have more clarity around that and we'll be sure, make sure to communicate that to the families. Um, but that is, in some ways, that's a site-by-site, um, conversation because we have programs like our CDC School Age Program. And our Kids Club Program on certain sites. So there will be opportunities at some of our select sites.
Right, that makes sense, and, um, the, I, I'm not sure I completely, I, I know the definitions of these various tiers. Like, what does it mean to be in the purple tier as opposed to the red tier?
So, uh, so the, again, referencing the blueprint for a safer economy, um.
Right.
There's been, there are four tiers, purple, red, orange, and yellow. LA County has always been in the purple tier. And the tier is determined by case rates and testing positivity rate. And so, um, this is again, a, um, goalpost that has moved repeatedly. But in order to move into the red tier from the purple tier, we would need to have a case rate. That is at seven for a hundred thousand people in the area.
And in the area, meaning Long Beach or meaning the county?
The references to tiers are driven by the California Department of Public Health.
Right.
But in reference to counties.
And, and do we know what the, uh, the rate is now, the case rate is now, um, uh, in, in LA County?
It's twenty.
Okay, so, so we have to almost decrease it. Uh, tw- two, two hundred percent, um, to get to the, to get to the, to a place where we would get into the red tier, is that right?
That's correct, but I think it's worth mentioning that when we met as, as a board on January thirteenth. The adjusted case rate in LA County was ninety-eight point three. By our next board meeting, it had dropped to seventy-five. It's dropped every week since, and right now we're at twenty. So that's in, that's in the space of, uh, uh, just over a month. We've seen that kind of decline and we hope that, that continues.
Yeah, no, and, and cross our fingers that it, that it will continue because that's, that's the big deal. And what's the level below red?
Uh, is, is orange.
Orange, and what's the difference between red and orange in terms of the, um, the case rates?
Uh, Mr. Otto, you're, you're testing my memory in some good ways on a moving target, so, um, I'll look that up right now. Or I'll defer to any of my colleagues who may have the information right in front of them to answer.
Mr. Otto, I know for high school, orange means football, so trust me for the high school level, orange is football.
Uh, I believe that adjusted case rate was below four, Tiffany.
Okay, okay, no, and, and I, I, I'm just trying to get a sense of what the movement's like, likely to be in a, in a, in a moving target. Uh, always, and then what, uh, we're gonna do, um. Um, these surveys for middle schoolers from March one to the twenty-sixth, these parent surveys. To determine, uh, the percentage of need, and I, I'm curious as to how those surveys are done. Um, uh, because I, I would suspect that the opportunities for. For being in school and the transportation and all those things would be factors, and so the. That the surveys would need to be done in such a way that you can tease out what it would take to, um. Uh, and, and for example, under what circumstances would parents wanna return their kids? Um, because, you know, they, they didn't have transportation or, um, you know, they, or, or any number of things. I, 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 I just don't know, but I don't know what the surveys are, but I, I know you guys are thinking about these things.
I could briefly answer that. At the middle school level, during our, uh, summer survey last year. Parents had three options. They had a hybrid option, which was essentially this AB s- schedule that I referred to earlier. Where they would attend schools twice a week. They had an all-virtual option for parents that wanted to keep their students. In front of an LVUSD teacher in an all-virtual setting, and they had an independent study option. Our resurveying, they will also have those same three options. So none of our models have changed. It's really just reconfirming the model that we originally placed them into. Really to accommodate the in-person hybrid model, um, when it comes time for that reopening on April twentieth.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I, 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 I don't know that there's an answer to this question, but I wonder whether people's. Uh, parents, if you will, uh, ideas have changed over time based on their experiences with, um. The hybrid system with, uh, with online learning and things like that. I assume it, it has. I've got a couple of, uh, grandkids that are staying with us and, uh, uh, at the beginning. Um, we, uh, we thought they were to tear their hair out, but by now, uh, they really like it. And, uh, so speaking of moving targets, um, uh, i- i- it's like online learning in college. Um, it, uh, was inconceivable and now we have online colleges. So I'm just curious, I, I don't think there's an answer to that, but, uh. Uh, do you have any?
For Chris Brown. Chris Brown can talk about the, at least the elementary data that we've collected and what percent of, of students or parents. Actually changed their mind based on the survey.
Absolutely, I mean, and you bring up, Mr. Otto, a great point about, you know, the, the times have changed between August survey and now, which is the point of us resurveying. But for the K through five students who just resurveyed, um, we did have some change their, their position from where they were in the summer. In fact, we had about forty-six percent of those who made a change chose from. Having said they would like to be in person in the summer to saying they would now like to be online, and that was about thirty, a little under thirty-four hundred families. Um, but we also had about thirteen hundred families change from online to in-person, so it kinda goes both ways. Um, with a little bit more going towards, uh, the online side, and, and we did have a few change. Um, who had not made a selection in the summer and they chose to either be online or in person, and that was about the same, about twelve hundred families each. Who had not made a choice in the summer and now chose to be either online or in person as we got closer. So, uh, we are monitoring that and seeing sort of how things are changing. Um, for those who are making a change. We, and we also, of course, had a lot of families who did not make a change. So we had about seventy-two hundred families. Who made a change, but we have thirty thousand students in that grade, uh, range, so quite a few students and families did not make a change to their choice from the summer.
What, what I see in looking at the literature, I don't mean the academic literature, but the newspaper literature about. This stuff is, I, I, I'm just so proud of Long Beach because, uh. Our parents seem, and our students seem to be giving us the benefit of the doubt in this very up-in-the-air time, and they go, they're waiting to see what we're gonna do. And I think that that's a cr- a, a tribute to, uh, Long Beach's reputation and the way that we do things. And, uh, so I, I, I feel strongly that, uh, that we're moving forward with less angst. Than a lot of districts I read about all over the country and a lot of comments by parents and, uh. So I, I, we, it's, it's, in my business, we call it a rebuttable presumption. There's a rebuttable presumption that. Um, that we're gonna do a good job and that, uh, we're gonna do it and somebody's gonna have to prove that we're not. So I'm very optimistic that, uh, we're gonna get the answers right, but I'm always looking not only at the excellence lens, but at the equity lens. And that's a harder thing to do, uh, although I think our, our toolkit, if you will. Is getting better and better about how to do that and make sure that, uh, that everybody gets all the opportunity that they need to. To be excellent or to be successful and, uh, but I, 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 I try and look at all of this in that, in both of those lenses. Because, uh, those, when you think about who our students are and, and, uh, uh, it's just critically important to do that. So I commend you for the, the hard and, and long work that you're doing on this, so that's all my questions. Thanks.
Okay, I'm looking to see if any, oh, Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, President Craig, and I, and I have a lot of questions, I'm gonna be honest, but I'm not going to, um, focus on that. I'm actually gonna ask, um, I'm gonna make a request sort of in three areas from our executive staff, given that. The superintendent and, and, and senior staff has spent so much time on, um. Outlining our new timelines and our plan, and, and I do, I do wanna say something, uh, for folks. Um, that reference this in their public comments, that even though our board is not taking action, uh, today, we don't have a, a. A recommendation has not been made, it's because we already had a plan. Uh, a plan had been developed, um. With certain possible dates that included March first and April twelfth as possibilities. Uh, what we're hearing today are revisions based on the latest information, the latest science. So I do wanna stress that, 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 that this wasn't, uh, about staff making a decis- decision or the board making a, a decision. We had a plan, uh, and we're being presented the most updated information based on the, um. Case rate, the newest case rate and the newest criteria stuff. In the spirit of that, um. A- a- and again, given that we, we've laid out at least the, the parameters of what that new revised plan, uh, looks like. Uh, I do wanna say that, um, a big component for me was, um, the opportunity for all of our school site staff. At the elementary schools to be vaccinated, uh, right, and, and so that's in line with, uh, both what we're doing here as a city. Uh, but also with the values that we uphold, right, that we wanna make sure, uh, that we provide an opportunity for all staff. That will be in person at our elementary schools first, but then possibly at our middle schools and high schools to be vaccinated. So I wanted to say that in the context of my, my two, I guess, requests, uh, for, for our executive staff and, and supporting senior staff. One is, um, President Craig had raised it. Um, I think for us, um, given that there is so much information. And even if there's a thousand people watching us today, there's thousands more that will get either second-party or third-party information. Um, many that will not know where on our website to find the latest information, uh, many that will not know really how to navigate. Getting that information from our schools, all right, even though we're, we've been directing folks to our schools. Um, I think, um, that we should explicitly outline, um, an opportunity to, to have two-way communication. And my, my suggestion would be that we do that by area, uh, right, that we either have some kind of town hall. Or listening session where we're gathering not just, uh, questions, uh, but that we're able to provide sort of real-time. On-the-spot information, refer them to videos and, and data and the PowerPoints that we already have. Uh, but I'm worried that because there's so much information tonight and that this is really right around the corner, right? If you think about March twenty-second and then the twenty-ninth, um, and given the activity in social media, uh, that I think it behooves us. To try to be, uh, as communicative, not just in disseminating information, but in providing some concrete opportunities. To meet, uh, with and engage with key stakeholders. So I would propose, again, uh, some kind of district-supported. Um, I, I'm calling it this town hall, some sort of virtual, uh, information sessions where we can give real-time. Uh, and responsive, um, you know, information. The second is, and it's related to this. Uh, I appreciate, uh, Brian, Chris, Jay, um, you know, we, we dug into the weeds a little bit, but. Um, I, I think, again, it behooves us to just provide a minute by minute. This is what it will look like at a school site that has, you know, two hundred in-person students. Uh, with, you know, some kind of visuals, diagrams, bullet points, something that we can all reference, share. That there's some consistency because there's so many unanswered, uh, questions, even if we host, uh, you know, info sessions or town halls. That I think just having as many accessible materials in every language that we can produce with as many sort of visuals. And, and I think for me, the minute-by-minute breakdown, right, what happens at drop-off? Where do students go at eight o'clock or nine o'clock? Um, what if a student was online? And the family changed their mind to be in person, what teacher options or possibilities are they gonna have? Um, you know, lunch, what happens there? And we know on our, and how does, what do those two and a half hours look like? Uh, right, in terms of synchronous. So I think, again, this pro- provides us an opportunity to gather the information and the questions. From what I'm proposing to be some kind of engagement info sessions, and then put together, uh, based on that. Some visuals, some diagrams, some, you know, quick one-page facts, uh, that we can use in complement and in concert. Uh, with the other communications that we're having. So that's my second one. Uh, and again, President Craig, and I'm mindful that I got a bunch of questions, but I'm just gonna push on a third one, uh, here. The third one is, I, I, I don't want us to lose sight, and I'm not suggesting that we're doing that, but today, today we were emphasizing in-person. Uh, return to schools, that particularly in my area, in the area that I represent. Not only did we have a lower response rate in the surveys from the schools that I serve and the communities that we serve. Um, but we also had a lower percentage of families choose the in-person option at many of the schools. I think I have five schools that their in-person option was below forty percent, uh, in my area. And, and so I, I would like, um, because these things are moving fast. If, if, if it's possible by our next board meeting, that first week of March, um, some kind of, of reported. Update on what we're going to do for those families and students that are gonna remain online. Or change their mind from in-person to online, um, for these three reasons. Um, and, and the data that we have, thank you, uh, for giving us the, the school-by-school breakdown, cuz that's what I'm basing it, uh, on, in the geographic breakdown. Um, these are our highest need students, right, these are the students that essentially. Um, according to the research, would benefit the most from being in person. But because of challenges in the neighborhood, challenges at home, challenges with our digital divide, uh, there are still, um. They, they are still disproportionately negatively impacted by this pandemic, and so I wanna make sure that we do right for those families. That, you know, they're not responding at seventy-four, seventy-five percent, uh, like the low parents to come in person. Um, and it may only be a third of the students, all right, that come in person, but, you know, we need to do right by that. Two-thirds of the students that are still gonna be at home, that also happen to be our socio-economically disadvantaged students. Our English learners, our, um, foster, uh, students, our, our, uh, students with disabilities. Uh, right, so I, I would request from staff, uh, some kind of also updated report, if possible, by next school board meeting. Uh, so that we also don't lose sight that, yes, we're, we're, we're transitioning to in-person, but a large percentage of our students. And disproportionately, a large per- percentage of our most impacted, uh, students will not be in person. For many of the reasons that Mr. Otto have alluded to, Mr. Miller have alluded to, whether it's transportation issues, economic issues. Accessibility issues, um, that, quite frankly, um. Are, are hitting, uh, harder in certain parts of our city, so I, I would make those to be requests of our staff. Uh, and, and, um, and, and I'm willing to engage in conversations about how we can do that, how we can put that together, uh, but, but I, but I think. Uh, again, it, and I think the, the number was a forty-five percent, forty-five percent breakdown, Dr. Baker, in terms of in-person and at home. You know, unfortunately, for those communities that would probably most benefit from being in person, and it's not to blame parents. Or to judge on why certain folks chose in-person versus, um, at home, but I think we can't lose sight. That, um, the data also shows that in terms of learning and our strategies for learning recovery and learning acceleration. Uh, that, that has to happen now, uh, right, as well with our at-home, uh, options.
Dr. Benitez, first of all, I'm wondering, were you in our principals meeting this morning, listening to our planning?
Maybe I'm not sure. I wish I was, right?
Just the things you're saying is exactly where we're at right now with our principals. So you you talked about these regional opportunities to communicate with parents. I think we can actually do one better, and I think at the individual school level, I already know our principals are planning for opportunities to engage with the parents at their school to describe the specific things at their school. And and so I think that's even probably one better than what you're referencing, because there are gonna be variations across sites. So I I trust our principals to put together the communication plan that we were talking about today. We'll be back with them on Friday so that they can have those those real two-way communication opportunities with the families and the staff at their school. I also think part of that is going to be to really describe the daily classroom experience, the daily experience of a student. From the moment they walk onto the campus, where will they go? When they need to use the restroom, what will that look like? When they're gonna leave, what will, how will they get their lunch on the way out? When they're in the classroom, what will the experience of a student be in the classroom? These are all the things that we know we need to communicate, and now that we know the date, and now that we know the the number of students, we can finalize all of those details in the next week or two and communicate that out through early March. So I appreciate that. And then the last thing I'll say, based on your your third point, obviously, moving to distance learning was not easy in the spring for our teachers and even into the school year. A lot of challenges and a lot of hard work they put in to really learn the craft of providing high-quality online learning. And they've they've done really amazing work, and it's been my pleasure to be able to see some of that when I'm in Zooms with teachers, some really exceptional online instruction happening. So I I anticipate that that's gonna continue. Yes, I mean, you know, whether we say it would be better for some students to get in than others, I think the reality is parents have made their choice, and we're gonna do everything we can to ensure regardless of the educational setting, we're gonna provide a high-quality educational experience. So it it won't be easy, but I I have faith in our our teachers with the work that they've done so far, with our principals and leading them, that whether they're in-person or online, that students will still, as best as we can, provide a quality online experience.
Also, just
Thank you.
Mrs. Craighead, you you made, you used the term pivoting back to communities and to schools, and I think, Dr. Benitez, what you just asked and what Mr. Muskovitz answered is an example of shifting or pivoting to schools, being at the center of families' lives and of communication and being able to personalize and really with a name and a face, an actual the environment that families will recognize. If if they're showing a protocol of how you walk up to to a gate, it's actually gonna be at the school that they'll recognize. And so this is an important, important transition at this point that we're ready for.
And and just to highlight that, Dr. Baker, it was very difficult for principals to have all the information all the time, right? So so what I'm what I'm emphasizing here is that what I'm hearing from parents is that they oftentimes would try to get the information from the school. And and I'm and I'm actually glad that misinformation wasn't given out, but that there was a lack of clarity around some of these questions that were still being developed. Right? So I think it's also about building trust back with parents, right, because they have been relying on district communication. All right, and they haven't really been having that kind of communication, at least systematically, all right, with the school. So again, this is an opportunity for us to address language accessibility, address technology accessibility. So folks weren't able to fill out the survey for technological reasons, let's get back on the phone. Right? And if we're gonna be in-person, let's set up opportunities for a a parent and a student to come and check out what's going on at the school and be able to ask questions in person. So I I know that that's that's implicit in what all of you are saying, but but again, I'm looking at this as an opportunity to engage with folks that have been struggling hard, all right, and through no fault directly of our system, but we have cracks in our system. All right, so now's the time to genuinely authentically rebuild some of that trust and some of that communication infrastructure.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Kerr.
Yes, thank you. The good thing about doing this at the end is that my colleagues have talked about so many things, which I think speaks to the good governance practice that we really wanna have, is that we are all trying to think about all of the things that we're not singularly focused on just what's important to me, Megan, but that we're looking at this as a group. So thank you to my colleagues for asking much of the information. I also have some questions that are in the weeds that have already been answered, and in the course of the conversation, I understand that they will be answered really specifically to students and families in different ways than this forum. But I did wanna acknowledge that I understand the frustration with the information. We know that the tension has been building around this meeting and this information with the county announcement on a holiday of all days when there was no way to communicate with each other. But I just wanted to to remind folks that that our meetings here are the public meetings of the Board of Education. And so information like this is information that the board needs in order to start to make decisions and to give approval for things that are happening. And so for as hard as it is to not hear it from a specific person, your principal or your teacher, that this is, this is the format that exists. So now that this is out in public domain, we can have really robust conversations and we can answer those questions and we can address concerns that we may have not thought about that so many of you have brought to us via email or social media or text messaging. So I wanna thank you for being patient with the pro, the way that information gets processed. And I look forward to a robust conversation moving forward. I think for me, this this pandemic has, you know, pandemics aren't perfect. And neither are the ways that we respond and the way that I have responded over nine months. And with that comes discomfort and and lack of control. So I acknowledge that in not knowing all the answers, even tonight, is something that I need to work through. And so I ask for some patience on that. And I know we've been asking for patience with each other for a long time. But it feels like there's some some momentum now to have good conversations that are productive. I wanna thank the city leadership and the Health Department for doing something that, as you said, Dr. Baker, very few jurisdictions have been able to do. Many of them say they value education, they value their educators, and we have a mayor and a health department and city council who have said, yes, we we really do. And the way that we show that is by acknowledging that it's important for teachers to be vaccinated. So thank you to the city and the Health Department for bearing that infrastructure burden. We know some districts are trying to take on their own vaccination programs, and I am grateful that that is not an infrastructure that we needed to take on because our city, as you said, has come beside us to partner. And that's been incredibly important to me and I know to our teachers. So I just wanted to make sure to express that gratitude to that partnership. We know that there are folks out there chattering as we're having this conversation about the pros and the cons of everything they've said, we've said, and that they've read. And I know for for a lot of our community and parts of our cities, this doesn't feel like a good choice. It's hard. They they tell us that their students struggle with online learning, but that the idea of going back to school creates a lot of anxiety. And so we know that in this movement forward, there are a lot of feelings. And for a lot of people, they're not necessarily the best. And so this is one of those moments that's really difficult, but it bears out that we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good in this, and how we meet the needs of students in this moment is most important. So thank you to staff for providing us with the details around students most impacted and the choices that their family will make. So I all of that to say, acknowledging this is a difficult moment, as hopeful as it is and as much as it is where we knew we wanted to be and where we've always been working to go, that there's still some anxiety in this moment. I will, I will add on, I talked to Mr. Muskovitz after our last meeting, that idea of families needing to know what a day looks like and how important that is. I even joked that we have some really creative students in this district who can probably animate something for us or build it on Minecraft or come up with these really creative ways of what their school site might look like. And working with people who are willing to to help us do that work so that families can feel comfortable in every moment when their students are onsite. I just sent my daughter back to school. I had to put her on a plane in a big airport and trust that when she is received 3,000 miles away, that there will be protocols in place that keep her safe. And so the updates around how she is doing and what her school is doing to make sure she is safe has been a lifeline for me. And I know 3,000 miles, it feels like 3,000 miles, even though it might only be two blocks for some of our students. So I think the details in the safety plan are critical. I appreciate you, Dr. Brown, talking about what the testing is. I would like to echo the comment that was brought up in public comment around students who may not tolerate that kind of test, but you did say that they will do that as they are able to. So if you could just speak a little bit to that specific one, cuz that I understand that one on a visceral level, so just wanted to make sure that you were able to emphasize that.
Sure. My reference to they'll do it as they're able was in relation to students testing themselves. And so in the coming weeks and and sooner rather than later, we'll be sharing some specific information about testing, which could include students self-administering the test, it could include support from staff, it could include a parent administering the test for the child. We had public comment asking for a saliva-based test, and at this point, our plan is to offer an anterior nasal swab. But to parents who have concerns about that for their children, about the child's ability to tolerate them, I would like to ask that you reach out to your schools directly, and we will be providing some guidance for those conversations, because I think there are some things that we can do together to support both what students are able to do, which is sometimes more than we think they can do, and also how we may support them in being able to do that. So I I have some thoughts that aren't appropriate for this conversation, but I think from a parenting perspective, for from a perspective of someone who knows people with special needs very well, and then also knows how well our families who have children specifically with special needs know them, I think that we can work together towards something that is supportive of everyone and that gives the children the opportunity to come to school if their parents are wanting that for them.
Thank you. And I think my last point is around the opportunity for continued communication. So we know this is gonna be an exciting and heavy lift for our school sites to do this work. I would ask and request that when those get scheduled, if they are on a site-by-site basis, that we as board members are copied on each school site's meeting so that we have the opportunity to be present and to show our support for parents and staff in those meetings and listen with a policy ear and listen with a board member ear. And I think that's it. I'm I'm grateful for the information. We know it's a big night and a lot of information. I think Mr. Otto earlier referenced drinking through a fire hose. So we know, as we have planned for this for nine months, it's different now that it's here. And so as we move forward, I wanna acknowledge all of the trepidation and excitement that's happening out there and assure people that we really do want to engage and continue to hear concerns and thoughts as we continue the planning process. But thank you to staff.
Mrs. Craighead, if I may, Dr. Baker began the presentation with some comments around balance. And I think that balance with the things that we're planning and with one another is what we continue to seek. We've heard throughout this experience and even in public comment tonight, a message of parents saying open schools, schools should have been opened. We've heard parents say, please don't open schools. We've heard teachers say, don't bring us back to school. We've heard teachers say, I wanna be in front of my students. And as a a public school district, our obligation is to everyone. And so what we continue to seek is the balance in all of those things, and our our hope this evening is that we can go forward together searching for that balance that will give opportunity to everyone for some of the things that they need, recognizing that no one is getting all of exactly what they want. So I I really appreciate everyone's comments and questions, and we look forward to moving forward in balance together.
And so with that, we will move on to business items, unless there's anything further. And I'm looking, so we're gonna move to business items. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for the update. Thank you for all the work that went into that and all the questions. And this is a conversation that will continue, so we will be going forward with this item on the agenda so that everybody will have an opportunity for the, to join the conversation. Okay, so business items, personnel, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources Services, approved and recommended by the Superintendent. First, I'll start with the classified and exempt personnel. Appointments, 12. Leave of absence, 11. Resignations, 7. Retirements, 10. An amendment, 3. With certificated personnel. The appointments, 16. And service changes, 1. Leaves of absence, 6. Release of temporary contracted employees, 5. Resignations, 6. Retirement, 10. An amendment, 1.
Move to approve.
Discussion. All in favor, Dr. Benitez? Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes 5-0. Instruction report.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I I vote aye. And hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes 5-0. Finance report, A.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes 5-0. Finance report, B.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that passes 4 with 1 abstention. Business Department report.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes 5-0. Purchasing and contracts report.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, President Craighead, I I wanted to highlight that I I counted six, there may have been seven or five, new contracts for tutoring. And I wanted just to highlight that this is part of our responsiveness, right, to provide additional supports for students. And it was, it was thing, you know, one of the items that's been highlighted through our LCAP process, through our commitment to provide additional supports for students that need it. So Dr. Baker, can you comment a little bit on those new agreements?
Sure. I appreciate you highlighting that, Dr. Benitez. These are master contracts that will allow schools immediately
Sure. I appreciate you higher um highlighting that, Dr. Benitez. These are master contracts that will allow schools immediately to begin to access tutoring resources. In fact, on Friday, um school principals will receive information about how to access the contracts. Many of them provide online services. So in addition to teachers who may provide tutoring services online through our regular LBUSD um programs, these are in addition to. And this actually did come out of feedback from a number of our LCAP participants who provide um feedback and engagement, really thinking about down to the individual student level, these resources can be assigned. So they'll be available just about immediately. Um, teachers and principals will be able to access them and to recommend specific students for these resources. We also anticipate building on these contracts for summer, um as we are in the development of a learning acceleration, supports, and enrichment plan um that will be activated come summer with summer summers um experiences and into next year. So this is the beginning of a number of resources that will come to the board for approval, um and using some of our CARES money and other resources to think about learning acceleration and support to our students.
It's great to hear, Dr. Baker. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so hearing no opposition or abstentions, that passes five-zero. Uh, next, we have superintendent items.
Um, we have no items tonight for this part of the agenda.
Okay, unfinished business, we have none. Um, new business. Uh, Dr. Brown, do we have a uh an update?
No update tonight.
No update tonight. Thank you. Reported board members, let's start with Ms. Kerr.
Thank you. I don't have much um other than I want to congratulate our National Board Certified Teachers who um attain that for the first time and those who renewed. Uh, it was said during the presentation that that is a monumental lift for teachers to do, to improve their practice, to benefit our students. So I am grateful for the additional time um and hours and hard work that they put into that uh to achieve that for themselves, um and especially for our students. So thank you during a time when there is a lot on your plate that you uh continued to strive for even more excellence. Uh, so congratulations to them. Um, I think I just wanted to reemphasize that tonight is a lot of information to digest, and we have a lot of feelings, all of us, around it, and would just ask for us to remember to interact with kindness and thoughtfulness and know that this is the beginning, or it's the continuation of a conversation we've been having for nine months, but that there are real opportunities for intentional back-and-forth two-way communication moving forward on this plan. Um, and I am grateful to everyone for uh for hanging in with us tonight and being a great source of infor- information and inspiration uh for our kids and the work we're doing here today.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Benitez?
Just one item for me, uh, Madam Chair, I I I'd like to ask for something to be put on a agenda. Uh, you know, I know we have a lot already, uh, but um I alluded to it earlier uh today, and I'm hoping that I can get one of my colleagues to support me in this. Um, and it was uh referenced uh earlier as well. So uh, I know staff's working really hard, um, but I've been a part of several meetings now uh in the last few months where we've had uh some challenges with interpretation and translation. And um, you know, it's one of those things that parents are always reaching out to me. Um, you know, it's 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 in these spaces that um I'm so glad that my parents kept telling my sister and I to keep practicing Spanish, right, to not forget our Spanish. Um, but unfortunately, um, you know, I hear it on an ongoing basis in the voices and and the you know, concerns expressed to me by parents uh in meetings that I've both been a part of and observed the challenges that we've had and the frustrations uh felt by the participants a- and our staff as well, because our staff also gets very frustrated when our interpretation and translation isn't uh going the way that we should uh have it. Um, but I've also um heard it from parents that are communicating with me that, you know, materials are just not accessible uh to them. So um, I'd like to request, uh, Dr. Baker, and again, hopefully I get the support from my colleagues here, if we can get some kind of audit uh or report on an ongoing basis on sort of where where we are with our interpretation and translation uh services, I've heard from uh parents, you know, and IPs, you know, being delayed because we can't get an interpreter in the IPs or we can't get materials translated. So um, this is one of those opportunities I think we have to build uh together, uh given the lay of the land, and given still that a a vast majority of our parents and students will remain online for a while longer. Um, so if there's a way for us to get um, if not monthly, bi-monthly updates, outlining what we're doing to make sure that we remained accessible, uh that we provide the interpretation that we need to provide, and that we build in some assurances for parents uh that have been in many of these spaces that are supposed to be parent-centered, uh but that we have these frustrations still being communicated.
And you know, um, just to kind of can a continuation of of that point, Dr. Benitez, and I support that. So if you want support from a a colleague, I I support that a hundred percent. Um, also, just for clarification, is our agenda um online translated into Spanish and Kamai? Because I know it was mentioned in the uh public testimony.
No, so we are in the process of transitioning to a new system for board agenda called Board Docs. And once that happens, it has accessibility built into it. Um, so there's training happening. We have several staff members who are um a part of the training, getting ready to transition to Board Docs um in the near future. And then it and it then it will be.
That's good news. That's good news.
I have good notes on your request, Dr. Benitez, and I also heard support from Ms. Craighead, so we we will work on that.
Me too. Support from me too.
Great.
And I'll just add on. I know um that I think that's an important piece so that we understand who's responsible for which translations, because I know there are times when we are not in-house translating, and sometimes when something like that happens, it's a hundred percent out of our control because something happened with whomever we're contracting with. So I think for transparency, that's just an important piece for all of us to know as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Otto?
You know, I uh I really don't have uh much to say, except that um I have been through my third onboarding session. I think all the sessions are uh terrific. This last week, it was curriculum, instruction, and professional development, and um uh the most significant thing about it was that I uh had all these questions at the end of it that I forgot about, because there was so much stuff going on that uh uh I wanted to circle back and do, and I will. But uh um uh, you know, I I'm interested in linked learning and pathways that I know some things about but not enough, and uh I heard some very smart people talking about uh what was going on in those areas, and so I I think that that's good. I I I would just echo what um Megan said, and that is that um this is about um eh as important a topic for this district, in my opinion, this reopening of schools as uh as there can be. And there are tremendous opportunities to to um raise the bar on um equity issues, to communicate uh our clarity and how uh and how we're we're trying to do these things to our school population in general. Uh, I've recently been over uh to um Avalon uh and visited with some folks over there and and had a nice long conversation with the principal, and um there were questions then about what all this stuff meant, and uh I so I know it's 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 if it's if they're interested in Avalon, they're interested in it everywhere. So uh um, I I've I've kind of got my shoulder to the wheel on this, trying to understand it and and keep up with it, and uh so I'm I'm looking forward to continuing uh work in that area. I am also very interested, and these aren't requests, I'll follow up um uh uh on on my own, but I'm very interested in the sports stuff and how we're rolling that out. Um, I know that at um uh we had a tran- uh a cross-country meet today, and there was one that did not happen, but we're beginning to do that. I am and have been for a long time a member of the Century Club here in Long Beach, which is a inveterate organization that uh uh that that helps out uh K through twelve high school, college uh athletes, and they are chomping at the bit to go back to work, and the president has looked me in the eye and said, you're going to give one of our first reports about what's going on there, so I'll circle back on that. And I am also interested in something, uh and that's our our about trade schools and and the trades, I should say. And I understand that's in a in a number of different places, the the work that we do in in the district, and I've had several inquiries from constituents, and so I'll double down. Uh, I I have been working on getting my Long Beach Unified Office at the uh Ed Building uh in shape, um so that I can uh keep some files there on some of these uh issues and arrange a place for um for uh me-to-me uh constituents when that's an option, which I looks to me like could happen um before uh before too long at all. And um I am living with this idea, to circle back of reopening. I, as many of you know, I'm very involved in the aquarium, and um uh as their uh the Vice President of the Board and kind of Chair of the Governance Commission Committee, we are talking all the time about reopening the aquarium and whether we're going to get to do it and under what circumstances, and they're tough que- questions, and yet they're very, very, very important questions. And I had the same issue at my church where uh we thought we knew what the rules were, and then ten days ago, the United States Supreme Court changed the rules about whether you could do religious services indoor, and we have tenants that want to do it, and we don't, and we have members of our congregation that want to do it, just like parents and students here want to do it. So it's on everybody's mind when it's going to return to normal or as close to normal as possible with uh the variations, but uh uh I I I'm very interested in this. It will continue to be so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Black History Month. Uh, I am um going to speak to, kind of in the spirit of Black History Month, I'm going to be working with uh Councilman Al Austin of the Eighth District in hosting the Black College Fair on March twenty-seventh. Uh, this is a great opportunity. For those that don't know much about the Black College Fair, uh it is a consortium of multiple HBCUs, which stands for Historically Black Colleges and Universities. Um, these colleges are fantastic, man. A lot of them are smaller in size, uh but the part that is powerful is that a lot of these colleges were started right after the Civil War, when African-Americans were looking for an opportunity at an education. Um, now, obviously, after the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four, they had an opportunity to um attend some of the other colleges, but uh these colleges were able to still persevere. And so we've seen not only some fantastic athletes uh come from some of these schools, like football players like Jerry Rice, but we've also seen some great people from uh our political spectrum as uh our own Vice President, and Ms. Kamala Harris came from an HBCU. So uh it's a great opportunity for those looking for uh the college experience uh from an African-American lens, I definitely uh suggest attendance to this college fair, which will be hosted virtually as of right now. It'll be through Eventbrite, and more details will be going out momentarily, but I did want to share that uh opportunity. Uh, also, I've had uh a little bit of progress from my uh communications plan that I stated from my last board report, uh as I'm still working with my team and getting my website and my e-newsletter uh uh officially uh ready for publishing. But with that said, one of the things that I do have going on is working with uh my fellow board member and Dr. Benitez, and participated in his monthly community forum, uh and that should be coming in uh coming weeks here, so I wanted to thank him for that opportunity. Uh, lastly, I'm going to do a shameless plug here and want to wish a happy birthday to the nineteen seventy-eight cheer captain in Penny Jones or Penny Miller, in my mom. Uh, today is her birthday, and unfortunately, I'm here at the board meeting, uh but uh I wanted to wish a happy birthday to her. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. So I'm assuming she was class of nineteen seventy-eight?
Yes, at Poly High School.
Okay, well, that means-
By the way, she will never let me live that down. She shows me photos of that all the time. Apparently, she was was an awesome cheerleader.
Well, you know what? Class of seventy-eight, that was a good year. That was my year also. So we're not going to talk about how I'm old enough to be your mom. Okay, so it's my turn for the report, and um I want to talk about the Founder's Day event that Long Beach Council held, and uh Dr. Benitez gave some remarks at that event. Was it was virtual, but I thought it was very nicely done. Dr. Benitez, I enjoyed your remarks. You talked about how proud your daughter is of her mom as a PTA volunteer, and I think that's one of the reasons PTA volunteers volunteered. We do it for our own kids, but then we see how it affects the other kids, and then it it snowballs from there. But the Long Beach Council, PTA, was celebrating their Founder's Day, um which is the founding of PTA back in the late eighteen hundreds. I won't get into it, but um Sheena uh Sheena Dennis did a really good job with the history of PTA, and yeah, I, you know, I always enjoy that event. Um, let's see. Also, I would like to thank uh Ms. Nina Jackson for extending an invitation to the um California School Library Association's annual conference, and I attended a a virtual conference on the uh digital digital citizen summit. Wow. And there were different workshops on um, you know, school librarians. There was one workshop that was presented by a nine-year-old girl, a girl named Charlotte from, I think it was New Hampshire, and she talked about her needs as a student, and um she presented things like she needs that one-on-one time with her teacher, you know, those kinds of things. I know we're going to hear a lot from Charlotte in the future, because this nine-year-old girl was more uh poised, mature, intelligent, charming, adorable. She, I I can't say enough about her. That was incredible. And then there was another workshop I attended that was presented by a woman named Jordan, and she spoke through her iPad. She's um non-communicative, non-verbal. She's an autistic individual. When she went through school, she was treated as though she couldn't be taught, and we heard about her frustration of of not having any expectations, but she couldn't, she couldn't communicate that. And so it wasn't discovered until she was eighteen years old that she has a, I, she has a bright mind. It's um it's inspiring as much as heartbreaking, you know, her story, because because we are, I don't know, it's it's just hard to imagine that um that there's somebody who could go through life being treated a certain way, and they're kind of trapped inside their own body, and uh but the good news is, it was discovered. She was able to communicate, and it was so inspiring to hear about her- She was able to communicate and it was so inspiring to hear about her story and her journey. And so I really want to thank Nina Jackson for extending that invitation because it was an incredible experience to hear all these things. And my big take, my big takeaway was just a deeper appreciation for our teacher librarians. I've always respected our librarians. I, I love that they have a section in the audience when we used to meet in person. And I've always felt very supported by them. And it was nice to be able to have that opportunity to just really see the work they do and the value that they bring to our schools, to our students. And, um, one of the, uh, one of the things that I got with, you know, librarians help everybody. And they help those, uh, help make those human connections online. Um, and so I'll move on, uh, because it is getting late. So let's see, a superintendent's report.
Excuse me, thank you, I will be brief this evening. I've asked, um, Chris Itzen to pull up our district website. I'd just like to show the community where they can get some resources that were discussed tonight that have already been translated into Spanish and Kamai and posted on the district website. Um, and Dr. Benitez, this is in no way to, to diminish the requests that you've made. I appreciate the requests that you've made and look forward to improving in the areas that you've, that you've talked about. But I just wanted to show from the district homepage, which you see in front of you. One click on the coronavirus response takes you to this page. There are two things. So hovering over the reopening update presentation, those are the slides under resources that are already translated and posted in English, Spanish and Kamai. It's one document with the translated languages attached. And then many of the safety protocols that are used, currently used in schools for, for staff that are teaching from their schools, um, sanitization, information and other details that many of the public would like to know are in the school opening and safety plan that has been revised, where you see the, the picture of the student with a mask on. So there's the English version, the Spanish version and the Kamai version that have been posted. And I just really want to encourage our community, that's a resource that, um, answers a lot of the questions that have been asked and, and we will continue to build these resources in the days ahead. So thank you for the opportunity to share that. Thank you, Chris, for pulling that up for us tonight. And that's my report, Mrs. Craighead.
Dr. Baker, just to clarify, the online version of the safety plan has been updated with all of the new requirements. So anyone who may have a copy, a hard copy of what was printed in September, October-ish, that is no longer the most updated version. It is, the online version is the most updated version.
That's correct. And it's easy to spot with the new cover. So just at a glance, you'll be able to see if you're looking at the old version or if you're looking at the revised version. So thank you for noticing that.
Thank you.
Okay, so announcement. All right, I would just to, um, extend best wishes to those of us who are, um, observing Ash Wednesday. And in honor of Black History Month, I'm going to share a quote that I gathered from the, uh, California School Library Association Conference. And it is this. "A single tree does not make a forest. A single string does not make music." And that's a Nigerian proverb. And I think it's very apropos for this group because we work together as a team and it's more than just one person. It's everybody working together. Uh, any other announcements? Okay, with no objection, we will adjourn the meeting. And tonight I'd like to adjourn the meeting in honor of Eunice Sato. Um, she passed away this last weekend and, um, she was an incredible woman. The first female, first Asian mayor of the city of Long Beach. Uh, she was also a Long Beach Council PTA president, um, you know, back in the day. And also a woman that we named a high school after. And it's our first school named for, uh, an Asian-American. She was a wonderful woman. She passed away this last weekend at the age of 99. And I think she was only, uh, a few months away from her 100th birthday. So she is somebody we will miss. Um, she was an incredible part of the community, an incredible part of Long Beach. So I'd like to adjourn in her honor tonight. So thank you, everybody. And, uh, we are adjourned.